So it is six oh one on April fourth, two thousand sixteen, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, the first part of our meeting is around the questions that we're gonna be, well, first of all, we have uh our finalists for the Director of People's Services today, who will be here in a short while, and we're gonna be having some nice conversation with them.
Mm-hmm.
But before that, as we discussed last time, uh, we're gonna go over the questions um that we're gonna be asking them.
Right.
Yeah.
I think more or less we know where we would like to focus, but we wanted to be able to um refine some of the questions that we had in front of us.
Mm-hmm. Um, they were asked um by the screening committee about eighteen questions.
Okay.
And they ranged from anything to finding out about their intentions for staying with the district, their thoughts about um doing a better job at continuum of services by bringing kids back from outside placements and and having programs in-house where they could be done in-house, um, you know, experience with working with IEPs, experience in working with staff, you how they would acclimate themselves to the district, how they would work with their staff, um, members and and all of that kind of thing. Uh, and of the candidates who um presented themselves, these two women were selected as finalists by unanimous vote of the search committee. Um, and um, I don't know if you wanna say anymore about them at this point, Cheryl, or not, or? No?
No.
Okay.
We're gonna keep a blank slate with fresh eyes?
We're all blank.
And uh, I'm sure we'll discuss after. And um, so in talking with Emery a little bit about the questions that were asked, one of the things that I suggested to him and suggesting to all of you was that we would give them a strategic plan, which I have done, as well as the proposal for social emotional learning that I gave you at the last meeting, and that the questions would sort of be framed around those two documents, giving, having given them some time to read and react to them and see what they're, how they see their place in all of this. So that's where these questions came from.
And do, are you saying that they already have the strategic plan?
Yes, I gave them the two documents ahead of time so that they could look them over.
They had access to it? Right, that's good. That's good. I think there were, uh, there are uh some potential additional questions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Jen, I think you mentioned that you had a couple of suggestions.
Yep.
And the other thing that, and this might be one of the questions uh that we already asked,
Mm-hmm.
but I'm always curious to see, um, you know, the, the, uh, question four here, how would you work with the staff and architects?
Mm-hmm.
Take it a step back and understand how they actually um uh start working with others in general.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it becomes a very important issue, how you, how you find the right way or how you find the best way to coordinate with folks to uh make sure that all these relationships are uh in a way that are conducive to collaboration and uh doing work together. I don't know where to squeeze that, if it can be a follow-up question, I'm good with that as well. But I want to understand the dynamics uh of collaboration, of participation, of um kinda at times leveling the hierarchy, but trying to solve the problems as opposed to worrying about, you know, who sits where in that hierarchy.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that, does it make sense?
Mm-hmm. I'm wondering if that's better as a part of talking about goal number two, when you're talking about their transparency and how, you know, not only being transparent, but again, how do you work collaboratively?
Okay.
To me, it's a student.
You know, you know, so how do you see yourself as part of a framework of collaboration and transparency?
Yeah.
Maybe would be the best way to phrase that. And then I'll run and type these up real quick.
I guess my um, my, my big question is, um, and I, I trust the committee that worked on this, but you know, this is the one thing that's on camera for the parents of Granby, and being that I was one of those parents, as you know, who had multiple issues around special ed, um, these questions for me, if I were sitting on the other side of the television,
Mm-hmm.
don't help me to understand how this person would work with my child or any other children. And I, it's the one place where I'm, I'm still stuck because these questions might help us as a school committee,
Right.
but I feel like it's our job to make sure that parents know who we might be hiring and that they need to know that their kids are gonna be taken care of in a way that maybe they weren't being before. And how can we convey that? How do, how can we help them to know what the search committee knows that none of us can?
So, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Would it be a separate question around their vision for special education department?
Hmm, or again, I'm wondering again if you're looking at goal two, which is around transparency. Again, this person's not gonna work directly with children, so I think that's the one thing.
Mm-hmm.
But that person's gonna work with families.
Right, exactly.
So, how, you know, in the context of the, uh, you know, and then a sort of,
Or students and families?
you know, uh, you know, or, and then how would you, um, you know, specifically collaborate with families of students with special needs could be, that could be like a two-part question?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So.
'Cause I think that's important. I, I mean, I understand what you're saying that they're not directly with children,
Mm-hmm.
but it's, I, I'm coming from the parent's side of it now,
Mm-hmm.
and I'm thinking about the uh experience that I had, which wasn't fun.
Mm-hmm.
And I need to know personally that, that the people services director cares about my child. And so whether they have direct contact or not really doesn't matter to me. It's how, how does that director make sure, how are they gonna help teachers do what needs to be done and follow IEPs, which hasn't always been the case?
Yeah.
And how are they gonna support me as a parent? And so these questions right now just don't, they don't help me see that and they don't help me, help us portray that across the cameras so that families can see it as well.
Yeah, so if we did something with question two, how do you see yourself as a part of, as part of a framework of collaboration and transparency in the context of confidentiality? And then how would you collaborate with families specifically?
Right. I had written, um, rewritten the questions that I had sent to you. They might fit there, um, one of them was about the emotional isolation. Um, and I wrote, emotion, emotional isolation is a common theme, not just for special needs students, but their caregivers as well. In addition to this, learners and their caregivers that fall under the special education umbrella are frequently unable to fully participate in school and grade level events due to a lack of appropriate accommodations. Um, how have you helped or could help families overcome these obstacles in order to better support their ability to participate fully in school events?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that could certainly be told down into a follow-up.
Right, but I think again, that also speaks to the second goal of strategic plan. It's, it's an, it's one thing to be transparent in your, in your communication with people, but again, how are you engaging with families? I think it's more really actually, and not how would you, how would you collaborate with families, but maybe how would you engage families?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah.
Um, and then certainly if they didn't get to the full meat of what you were looking for, Jen, you could certainly ask that as a follow-up.
Okay.
All right. And I-
Well, well, um, just to quickly uh throw this in there, the, uh, what, what I'm hearing is that we are trying to make the best use of our time as well.
Mm-hmm.
But at times when we put so many things together,
Mm-hmm.
uh, potentially the meaning that we want to convey is getting lost as well.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So i- if we're gonna uh divide it into two, three questions, at least from my perspective,
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with that, as long as we get the answers, that will be helpful to us and to those folks who will be watching later on.
Right.
Uh, to see what, you know, what questions were asked and why.
And I think from your perspective, you know, certainly, you know, before we move on to the next big question, does anybody have a follow-up, you know, um, to take that time?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Understanding you got a forty-five minute window to deal with, so.
Yeah. Sure.
I would think this, since they, they prepared, they prepared for the screening committee, they've been here once
Mm-hmm.
and asked a lot of questions.
Yep.
I would hope that they would, uh, and they prepared for that. Now they're finalists, so they obviously, hopefully they've learned more about Granby and the special ed department. So I would hope that they would really review, you know, the resume with us without having to look back at it and then tell us how it's gone so far, what else have they found about us? 'Cause we're still looking for that best fit here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're two good candidates, but we gotta look for the best fit.
Mm-hmm.
I would hope they would do that in their introduction or something if, if that's the way to go.
Right. Here's, having done this a lot and the screening committee actually, you know, we talked about this as well. Sometimes when you ask that person, you ask the person the question first thing, a lot of time gets sucked up in the interview and you don't get time for the rest of it. So maybe that's better placed at the end. Is there anything else you'd like us to know about you?
Mm-hmm.
And now having been here and at the finalist stage, is there anything else you'd like to add or questions you have for us? And that would kinda give you a, a sense of, um, you know, where they are because, uh, like I say, sometimes I've been in forty-five minute interviews when you say, tell us about yourself, and it's forty-five minutes later and they still don't know about themselves and you haven't had a chance to ask them, you know, questions, so.
The, you had, you had one more question, right?
Yep, I had just one more, and it was just kind of actually what Marie was mentioning, and I don't know, and I think Judy, you mentioned it, might be a good follow-up as well. Um, but I, I'd really like to have it on record for the committee tonight about the continuum of following and the enforcement of IEPs from grade level to grade level and especially from school to school. That is a huge challenge right now in our schools.
Okay.
Um, having gone through it myself and seeing IEPs fall apart, those, that first critical month of school, um, and setting up those kids, you know, for success for the rest of the school year.
And the transition between schools too?
Yeah.
Which I think in the past has, at least from my point of view, has not been done well.
And the input I've gotten from pretty much every special-
Jen, do you wanna give me some language, 'cause I'll just add this as a question?
Sure, um, how would you, how would you work to ensure that the enforcement and follow-through of IEPs for special needs students are continued seamlessly as students move from one grade to the next? Or especially, sorry about that.
It's okay, I need you to slow down 'cause I watch you.
Sorry, do you want me to forward this to you?
I watched you at the word "ensure," so.
Okay, uh, here, let me-
How would you work to ensure?
That the enforcement and-
I do.
and follow-through on IEPs?
I wish I could whisper that, but I'm not, I'm sorry.
Um, and I are continued seamlessly? As students move from one grade to the next or from one school to the next?
One, one, one last thing from, from me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that we only have so much time,
Mm-hmm.
but as I read the questions, um, there are good questions, but they ask, uh, general, uh, around general themes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there, is there any question, especially those of you who have been, uh, uh, working on special education before, um, is there anything that we can really hone in and make more specific? With some examples, make it personal, make it, you know, the, the, a storyline almost, so that we can understand how, you know, some challenges are addressed, some, what, what they consider as the most important part of their, uh, work day, whatever it might be.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's good.
Here's what you might wanna do, is just kind of listen to how they answer these questions, because I think the how is gonna tell you how deeply they've gone into where you want to go as a district and what their thoughts are around this. And then if it doesn't give you quite everything you need, then allow yourself to follow up.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Um, because again, I think if you do too much reading, you might not get the depth of thought.
Mm.
That's my only wondering.
Good, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. I mean, we sometimes have the, the opposite, just question comes out and it's one minute and we're done and suddenly, you know, six questions, ten minutes, we're looking at each other. I'm just trying to throw it out there in case.
I don't think that'll happen with these two candidates.
Nope, good.
No.
I like that.
Uh, I warned them all, be crisp before they came into the room to meet with the subcommittee, and they were crisp, but, um, yeah, the, the interview took the full period of time with both, both women.
Cool, that's good, good, so.
Good.
Um. Okay.
Did, anybody, Deanne, uh, or Jim, did you have anything that you wanted to add or anything that's not clear to your liking on the list?
No.
No? No? Okay.
All right, I'm gonna go quickly.
And Jen and Marie, you guys had your concerns, questions included, okay.
Sit at a computer.
Yes, yep.
Okay, I'm gonna go quickly sit at a computer and make these look pretty.
Sure, are we taking a little break or are we doing?
You can do that, 'cause I don't think we've seen the first candidate.
Okay. So we have, it's about, what, thirteen minutes to go?
Okay.
Taking a little recess?
Are they local?
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. This is Catherine Mahoney, who is one of the finalists for the Director of People's Services position, and she is your first candidate to interview this evening, so Catherine, this is the hot seat.
Thank you very much.
Where's the air for you as well?
Thank you for having me on this lovely night.
It's lovely April fourth.
Exactly, exactly.
It'll be April fourth.
How you doing?
Well, thank you.
That's good. I'm your, uh, uh, part-time cameraman and, uh-
Host.
And MC.
And MC, yes.
Excellent.
On that.
Great.
So first of all, thank you for, for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Really appreciate it, and congratulations for being one of our finalists. Really excited to have this conversation with you.
Thanks. Yeah.
Um, so, uh, since, I don't, I don't think anybody's on the screening committee or is there someone? So, uh, it probably, it would be a good idea for all of us to introduce ourselves.
Great.
Um, uh, my name is Emery Evren. I am a member of the school committee, I'm also the ch- uh, Chair of the school committee. Uh, and this is my second term, the first year of my second term, so my fourth year.
Great, nice to meet you.
Welcome, I'm Jim Patrice. Um, I'm finishing my third year on the committee and I'm, I'm a retired educator from the school system.
Great.
I'm Marie McCourt, this is my second year on the committee.
I'm Jennifer Curran, and I was appointed to the committee in September.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Deanne Taylor-Lukowski, and this is my, it's only our second year.
Great.
So what, um, what we're told is that, uh, you have a copy of our strategic plan?
I do.
So if you don't mind, we wanted to, uh, start with that. First of all, we want this conversation to be as, uh, as open, as, uh, informal as it can be.
Great.
Uh, we have some questions to ask, but we wanna also make sure that we, uh, understand who you are and, uh, talk about things that are important to you as well.
Okay. Okay, good.
Um, so with that strategic plan, uh, we wanted to understand if, did you get a chance, first of all, to take a look at it?
I did, I did.
We just wanted to understand what you get out of the strategic plan that would be relevant to the things that you would like to do in our district and how they align or what else you would like to add, we would like to see, uh, from the str- that strategic perspective.
Mm. Um, I did have a chance to look it over a couple of times, and I know it's funny, I, my first thought was this could be any school USA. I mean, it really is, so many of the things are things that in other districts I've worked in, we certainly have dealt with these issues when, uh, I love, um, under one part where it talks about roadblocks and it's budget or money listed in about six different ways. Um, so, you know, I don't think that these are unusual problems. Certainly the size of the district makes, um, some of the, um, roadblocks, uh, greater, um, but then there are advantages to that as well. Um, and I asked, actually after my interview, I asked the, the group there what, um, what they felt was their priority for, um, 'cause I had said that I had looked through the strategic plan and sort of curious what their idea of the priority for the Director of People's Services would be, and they said really just continuity at this point, so. And I did see that certainly listed there. I think the idea of, um, that sort of occurs to me as I look at this is really about, um, developing capacity within the district. And that can be, um, in the development of programs at service kids, um, technology, all of those pieces. Um, and I guess I'm, there's a sort of a playover into your SEL, the social emotional in terms of how do you develop capacity, how do you depend on resources within the community and make those work together so that you can get the most, um, from what you have? So that was something that, um, that certainly, uh, was talked about within the strategic plan. Um, I also think that, um, the, because budget is such a big piece always with this, that the idea of how do you work cooperatively across that one area, technology is not separate from, special education is not separate from curriculum, that, but that it's about working together to figure out, uh, resources that will enable and support all of those different areas um, with, with a common kind of outcome for everybody, so.
Do you see one of those, uh, areas more of, uh, interest to you or more relevant to what you would like to accomplish here?
Sure, I mean, I think that, um, you know, from my experience, uh, I'm currently in Westfield Public Schools. My job has been to be the program coordinator for the district, which includes both regular education programs as well as, um, special education programs. Um, and they, they address the needs for the gamut of special needs, um, within the district. And, but more recently, um, I have been more interested in, we have developed programs and I can talk about that, but, um, more, more recently, I'm interested in looking at how we're, the provision of service for, services for those students who are not in programs. How do we, uh, make sure that we are using, um, the most current research-based approaches? So that, my goal is always that I go into a team meeting with stu- with students and parents and that I can answer the questions, my student getting what they need and feel good about that response. Um, our, we often get into trouble when we end up in a team meeting and, um, the parent is saying, but there's this and this and this, and we don't sort of understand what all the options are for our students. And obviously, we always have to work between, um, providing a free and appropriate public education versus sort of the old idea of maximum feasible. Parents are really great advocates these days. Parents are very savvy with, with technology and access to resources. Um, it's unusual not to go into a meeting and find a parent who hasn't done their research to find out what is the best approach for working with a student with autism or what is the best approach for working with a student with a reading disability. Um, and so I think that, um, it's, you know, there's advantage to having programs for certain kids, but I think that sometimes we get, at least in my district, which is a larger district, obviously, we can get so focused on that that we forget about sort of the resource room, um, learning strategies kind of approach and how do we, um, make sure, again, that we can, we have the capacity to provide the best services for our students within the schools.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So before we move on, um, I, one thing that I, 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 I think, um, I, I did last time also when we were having some interviews. I, I actually, because we have our camera on
Yep.
and folks are gonna be, uh, watching this, if you could briefly, uh, tell us about yourself, and I apologize for not doing it, uh,
That's fine.
before that initial question.
Sure.
Um, that would be much appreciated.
Sure. So, um, I have been in education for about twenty-two years. Started out as a paraprofessional, um, and then moved into a teaching role as an intensive special needs teacher. I'm also a certified guidance counselor and did that for a couple of years. I've worked early childhood through age twenty-two in, in a variety of different programs. Um, and I've been in seven different districts over those twenty-two years. Uh, started in Springfield and South Hadley and Amherst and Greenfield and came back to North Hampton and now in Westfield. I live in Amherst, I have a twelve-year-old, uh, who is on an ed plan, an IEP, so, um, that's brought me a, certainly a different perspective for things. Um, but yeah, most recently have been working as a program coordinator. I am part of the central office team in Westfield. Um, so I have been, uh, a lot of times my role is more of an assistant director of the, of the district where we have eleven hundred students on IEPs. Um, so it's a fairly large district. Um, that's, so that's sort of who I am.
Great, thank you. So we're gonna, um, start going over our questions.
Sure.
Uh, everybody, I think everybody has one question, right? Uh, and, uh, we may have some follow-ups, uh, for some of the questions, uh, if, this is-
Great.
Okay, so I'm first. Um, this is a two-part question.
Okay.
Um, what do you feel is the role of support services in the development and implementation of the district's curriculum? And also, how would you work to ensure that the enforcement and follow-through on IEPs are continued seamlessly as students move from one grade to the next or from one school to the next?
Great. So the role of, uh, support services is, to me, mostly, um, or in, the priority for support services is giving students access to the general ed curriculum. And I would say that, I don't wanna, um, sorry. Obviously, we can look at the response to intervention model, uh, which would put our support services either in the tier two or tier three area of the, I don't know if people are familiar with the RTI, where, uh, prior, the primarily general ed is focusing on sort of the tier one le- um, level of intervention. Um, although those boundaries cross over and it's not as clear as one would think it is from the diagram. But, um, it really is about allowing students to have access to the general, general ed curriculum. Um, we, people often ask about portfolios and MCAS and, um, the only one thing that I can say, or the thing that I can say that really supports, that is really in the best interest in, of special education and that, um, in that testing, is that it does force, uh, our special educators to really look at, um, the core curriculum and make sure that students are having access to it, whether it be through entry-level skills at portfolio or through, um, general MCAS testing. But I think sometimes it's easy to think that some, that ju- support services, special education, or even, um, ELL services are in addition to what's happening in the regular classroom, and in fact, they are, should be, um, interwoven, what's happening in the classroom. So as I was mentioning before, with the idea of looking at our, our resource room or learning strategies or however you label those, um, providers, really, um, we should be looking at, uh, having those folks work very closely and in alignment with, um, regular ed instructors because they often will provide explicit instruction on particular skills, but unless it's done in the context of what's being taught in the regular classroom, it becomes meaningless or it's much more difficult for the child to generalize into, um, those steps that they need to be able to achieve in order to move to the next level of achievement. So that's, I think it's a very integrated, um, approach. And in terms of ensuring enforcement and follow-through in IEPs, one of the things that, um, I love about my work right now is the ability to go out into the schools and be in the classrooms and to ask questions of our, um, educators. I really think that, um, unless you're out there really seeing what's happening, talking to children in the classrooms and spending some time in the classrooms, you really don't get a true understanding. And the IEP is absolutely a wonderful guide if it's, if they're written well. And I, I, I do believe, I've done train, I've trained people to write IEPs and I feel very competent in terms of my ability to look at an IEP and know whether it's quality and will actually translate well, um, to the educational setting. But I love being out in the classrooms and working with teachers. Um, sometimes I'll go into a classroom and see something and just have a quick conversation with the teacher about, um, whether they could see doing something differently, instructing slightly differently, perhaps stopping what they were doing because there was another piece that they were missing and clearly the students were missing. Um, and then offering resources once I see those things. And sometimes teachers are familiar with the resources I'm offering, but other times, they're, it's something that they haven't heard of. Um, so it's, it's been a wonderful exchange for me with our, um, educators to be able to really work closely with them and see what's happening in the classrooms. Because you can't just, I mean, I, obviously my responsibility will be to read and sign off on IEPs and make sure that they're well-written, but really they need to be functional and thoughtful and individualized for the students.
Just one follow-up if you don't mind.
Sure, mhm.
Um, it's just a little bit more specifically on transition from school to school.
Oh, right.
Which hasn't, you know, we've had a little bit of issue with that in the past.
Sure.
So there doesn't seem to be a lot of help for that student to transition from building to building.
Right.
So how possibly-
Well, there are a variety of models. Right now, I'm, uh, over the last couple of years, we have a, in Westfield, and that's my most recent experience, so that's what I'll refer to. In Westfield, we have an early childhood center that is separate, so all our students who are in pre-K are in a separate building from the rest of the schools. And, um, over the last couple of years, I've worked with the principal of- And over the last couple of years, I've worked with the principal of the early childhood center to look at transition. And so one of the things that I've done is, well, already, I've met with her twice about the students that she has red-flagged and thought that those are the students that she thinks might have the most difficult transition or have needs that are complex enough that it will be helpful for the receiving schools to have a lot more information. My next step is I will ho- hold meetings with the teachers of those students and have them give me pers- their perspective on the needs of the student. Because, well, for me, as a program coordinator, there are different, although I don't like children to go into programs in kindergarten. I I do feel like kindergarten and first grade, you should be able to differentiate for most students. But there are, there's an occasional student who might need to go into a program. So I meet with those teachers and if there's any student that I have questions about, I spend time in those classrooms. I've actually done a couple of observations of those students. But I think it's about, again, being out there and being visible and working with all the players. And it's not just about one person's idea of where a student should go or what their needs are. It really has to be, sometimes I'll meet with therapists, physical therapy, speech-language pathologists, just to try to get a sense of what the students' needs are. Again, I feel like it's critical for me to know the students as well as I can because I wanna be an advocate, you know. I think sometimes parents are surprised by me in a meeting because they actually are surprised at how much I'm advocating on behalf of their child and bringing things back to the the child's needs. Because sometimes meetings get contentious and it's, we get lost in the negotiation of of what the child should get versus what the child needs. So I think with transition, I also am involved with transition at the post-secondary level. I run a transition program in Westfield. So I've done a lot of work for the eighteen to twenty-two, so that high school to post-high school transition. But I think in terms of a model, it really is about having people communicating and talking. I love the idea, one of the things that excites me the most about being here is that I believe there are somewhere around a hundred and seventy students maybe on IEPs, give or take. That's, that is a completely manageable number of students to be able to get to know and to be able to be involved and understand their needs. So right now, I have close to three hundred students who are in special programs in Westfield. And so I certainly know those students as well as many of our students who are in an inclusion setting as well.
Thank you. Second question.
Sure.
How do you, this is a two-part question. How do you see yourself as part of a framework of collaboration and transparency in the context of the confidentiality that surrounds the students you serve? And how specifically would you engage families in this process?
Well, I think, I think I am rather transparent. I'm not, I I thi- I think of myself as a tell it like it is kind of person. I'm not a player of any kind. And I think oftentimes, parents really respond to that. Again, I'll go back to just what I mentioned before in terms of parents being sort of surprised that I'm as much of an advocate for their child and that I'm willing and interested in what the child's needs are. I think one of the things that I've done often in our district, and I tend to work with some of the more challenging parents in our district. And and I'm not just saying that that my colleagues will refer for, refer certain parents to me as well. Because I often have done pre-meetings and post-meetings with parents prior to and after IEP meetings as a way of connecting with them, bringing the language down oftentimes. Well, and I know as a parent myself going into an IEP meeting, I'm well-educated, I have a background in this, and I get intimidated going to my daughter's IEP meeting and she has a specific learning disability. I think about the parents who have kids with complex needs and don't have any idea what's going on or what's being said. So I think that I have an empathic approach to the way I deal with parents, which perhaps leads to my transparency a bit. But I do like to meet, I, you know, I'll take the time to meet with parents individually. I have a parent who wanted a child to take the regular MCAS and this child is well below her her grade-level peers in terms of her cognitive abilities and really would find it quite challenging, has major memory issues. And so I I took the ti- the parent has been, they've talked it out in team meetings where the parent was insisting that the student take the regular MCAS, she's in in third grade. And I spent time with the parent explaining the process of MCAS. She really didn't realize that if she didn't take it now, that she could take it later. And the fact, you know, I was able to explain that we're moving from one assessment that's not gonna be relatable to an assessment in a couple of years. They're, they're gonna be very different-looking kinds of assessments. So, you know, I think that just spending the time with that parent and explaining to her in 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 language in in a way that she could understand allowed her to really feel more comfortable. I actually don't know what the, her decision was because that wasn't my intent to sway her one way or the other, although I think it would be in the best interest. It was more about giving her the information that I felt like she needed in order to make an informed decision. So that was really important to me. And and I've been able to, you know, maintain some really positive relationships with people because, you know, I'm not afraid to say I don't know also. There's been plenty of situations where I just, I think, I'll be, I'd be lying to say I knew what the right answer in the situation was. So consistency of communication is is critical in that.
Great. Just have a quick follow-up to, I'm just dovetailing off the idea of collaborating with families.
Yeah.
So I just have a quick question about emotional isolation, not just of the students who fall under the special ed umbrella, but the parents as well. It can be very isolating for parents, not being unable to attend, say, after-school events, activities, simply because there isn't appropriate accommodation or childcare or something. How have you, how have you kind of tackled those challenges in your kind of position?
I think sometimes when there's a sort of a need for, this is maybe one piece of it. I think about a child with a complex need whose parent wants them to participate in sports and we know that that's a real challenge because the student might have some cognitive disability as well as some physical disability, whatever it might may be. And I think that oftentimes, people see that as a problem immediately. It's sort of like, oh, oh, gosh, you know, what are we gonna do here? And I think that I like to think of it more as a puzzle about how do we fit this together to make it work for for a child? And I do think we disenfranchise people without even knowing it. There was a question at the prior interview where they were talking about connecting with parents and just the, by the fact that we hold meetings at certain times of the day where some parents who work can't make it. And we hold one meeting a month and if you can't make it, you're, you know, you're, we've disenfranchised you versus maybe holding the same meeting a couple of different times during the week or during the month. So a variety of people would have access. But I do think it's about not seeing it as a problem right away. And I think oftentimes, there's really easy solutions to some of these problems or situations or needs that really, if you take a minute and work with folks, we have, when I was in Northampton, the students that I was working, I was an inclusion specialist. So my job was, I went from being an inclusion specialist where I was trying to get everybody in the mainstream to a job as a program coordinator where everybody was headed to a specialized program. But in Northampton, we had, we did have students who were typically uninvolved as running for school office and and participating in sports. And it's about learning who your, who the players are in the school system. Who are your teachers? Who are your coaches? Who are your administrators? Who are most likely to be able to take on the challenge and help you solve the problem of how to handle or how to, how to provide access for that student?
Thank you.
Welcome, Catherine. A little simpler question for you. Take a break in the middle here. And that's regarding the technology goal that you referred to earlier in your opening comments. How would you assess and recommend appropriate technology, technology to support the students under your care of pupil services?
Right. So I think sometimes we rush into technology for students. And so I've learned over the years, having been a teacher of children with intensive special needs, those were the students that got, were the prioritized students for technology because many of those students were non-verbal or had limited access physically to to the curriculum. So we were often looking for alternatives for for those students. And so I think that now we're in a whole different ballgame in terms of technology and how we're using it. And I think that for the complex kids, the use of assistive technology evaluations is a, is a very appropriate way to evaluate those kinds of needs. I think that technology is only as good as the people who are implementing it. So I think that, I think that I would work with the teachers to really look at what their needs are. There are some teachers who do really well using a smartboard and really are just have great finesse with it. It's not an extra thing. It's not cumbersome. It's really something that works really well for them. Whereas another teacher would look at something like that and feel pretty overwhelmed by it. So I think as much as you're looking at the students' needs, I think all students need, will need technology at some point. I think we'll have discussions about the use of smartphones eventually in our classrooms rather than telling kids to put them away. And I look at my, I do Google about twenty-five times a day to find out information and yet we tell these students to put it in their pocket. But I do think that technology is is gonna be something we're gonna be looking at for all students. And I, but again, I believe that it's as much about the implementation. So when I was working with the intensive special needs students and we were looking at technology, say for a student with, who was non-verbal, we had parents who were going to Boston Children's Hospital and coming back with a device this big that cost four thousand dollars and this child was in first grade. And there was multi-layers to how they were touching the buttons and working their way through. And so I think that we always have to build on technology, build on what students know and and move from there rather than providing the big device and expecting kids to somehow be able to wrap their heads around it. So I'm not sure in terms of there's any particular way I would look at assessing a student or a group of students. But I do think it is useful to look at what the teacher's needs are in terms of technology and also looking at working with administrative team and the curriculum folks in terms of looking at what are, where we're headed with instruction and that plays a role in it. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
My question is around physical space.
Okay.
I think you have the questions.
Yeah.
We have two separate situations. One is thankfully, our school building project has been approved recently.
That's very exciting.
So we're gonna have this new building next door where both of our elementary schools will be together. And then we're gonna have our junior, senior high school that we are in right now. So it presents two different types of opportunities for us.
Sure.
So the first part of the question is related to the new school. Even though we did our best and we, you know, talked to all of the educators involved as the design was being put together, we still have some opportunity to refine what's there. So what would be your approach as you work with the staff and architects and those involved in that refining the design process? To make sure that the the space and the layout is consistent with what you would like to see for special education?
Right. That's a good question. I I think that obviously, working very closely with the folks who have been here, you, if you're building a new school, you've obviously assessed the needs of the district in a way that I couldn't do immediately coming in. So there would be some dependency on what's already, the work that's already been done. But what I think I could bring to that process, besides working with those folks, is that I have worked in now at least seven different, in seven different districts. I've seen some good and some bad in terms of the physical layouts for buildings. I've also worked in a variety of programs. And so looking at whether it be a program for students with autism or a program for students with language-based learning disabilities, there are gonna be different needs based on the the way teachers instruct those students. So that certainly is a piece that I would feel very comfortable in. I feel like I have a good breadth of knowledge in terms of how la- how teachers can facilitate positive layouts within their rooms. It might be as simple as a program that needs a bathroom connected to it because of daily life skills or toileting needs. I mean, those are, you know, things that come up and we often forget about. Sometimes it's the location of the classroom to the nurse's office. Or then there's the, a greater piece and I think a a critical piece as we look at moving forward with schools is that oftentimes, and this still happens surprisingly, that many of our special needs or or support classrooms are well away from the regular ed setting. And so I think that looking at, if we're, depending on the model that the district is moving forward with, whether it is a co-teach model or whether it is a more of a pull-out model, those things will impact the way you want to set up the the different classrooms within the school setting. So I think that that it's really gonna be about looking at what's already been done, communicating with the current players who are invested, stakeholders, and and talk with them and work with them to, I think I'm just an additional set of eyes, perhaps with a different lens, rather than a main, you know, facilitator of of it all. Because the work, as I said, I think is, I was able to see a little bit of a map of the, of the new school when I was here last time and it was, it looked really interesting. So I know that some of that work is done. And I think that working with the junior high school, junior, senior high school staff to assess space for programs and needs, again, it's very much about, I I think that the difficulty in me, for me in answering that question is, one of the things I'm, I would spend a great deal of my time over the first six months that I'm here, six months to a year that I'm here, is really looking at, do we have the breadth of programs and and the continuum of services that we need? And once we can identify that we have, there are no gaps, then looking at things like space is a much easier discussion. Because you know that, you know what you're playing with, you know what you're you're working with. And so that's just really figuring out how that, again, how that puzzle kind of fits together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This question is regarding the proposal for the social-emotional learning that we're considering.
Right.
If we were to approve the plan, how would you work with the community partners group in implementing it?
Yeah. So I have to say, it's a wonderful plan. I, you know, I actually went and showed it to my superintendent and I said, look at this plan. This is really great. So it was really, and I know that she was really helpful because she said that right now the superintendents are working very, there's a prior, they're prioritizing the social-emotional learning piece. So I thought that was really interesting. Of course, I've been doing the social-emotional learning through my programming for the last four years where we have been developing a continuum of services to support the needs of our students. I think that, I think it's very exciting about working with the community partners. I will say that the one thing that I, not to, with a critical eye, with an eye for sort of the piece that, you know, I would wanna take a look at is, again, that idea of building capacity versus always using outside providers to come in. So although I'm very comfortable with working with a variety of outside providers, in Westfield, when I started, we had a group of students who were headed to the May Center. These were students with significant autism. And so we were paying eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year to send these students to to the May Center. And one of my first projects was to figure out a way to have these students stay in district. And we decided, the superintendent was, had also created this initiative to look at this piece. And with her, we worked to develop a relationship with Westfield State University. And so we actually have a contract, a relationship with Westfield State where they provide us. We knew that Westfield State was at the forefront for looking at and training teachers in applied behavioral analysis, which we believe strongly was a very strong approach to working with these challenging students. So we, we sat down with them and we, there was someone from the program out of the School of Psychology. And we developed a program where we could have their students coming and working in our programs. We also had the the instructors in the program coming and working with our teachers to to help us develop a program that would be using the most recent and best research-based approaches for these students. As a result of bringing this program into our district, we now have about twelve students in the program. I would expect that at least. I would expect that at least six to eight of them would have been out of district at this point. And so that's, you know, potentially, we're talking millions of dollars over the lives of these students easily. And so I love, I loved working with them and I, then after we did that and we were kind of up and running, I said, "Come look at our social emotional program." We have a program we called Rise, Reaching Individual Success Every Day. And it was for our students with essentially social emotional behavioral problems. And I thought if this can work, this approach can work with these students with these really challenging behaviors, why can't we take components of that and bring it over to our, our behavior program? And so we had the students who are working in our, we still have students doing internships in our CLER program, which is our autism program, but we have other students, grad TAs who are coming in and now working, helping us out with our, with our emotional behavioral program. So that has been really exciting. We've worked with counseling programs. The Carson Center is a big one in Westfield that we've worked with. But I also like the idea of working with other school systems. Because one of the things that was very much in our minds was that if we could get some of our programs up and running and of the quality that we were hoping for, that we could perhaps tuition students in and eventually make the programs in some ways self-sustaining. And so that's been a goal for us. So I know there's the possibility of, rather than depending on private or even public day programs, there's, I think we can be working with, with public school, other public schools to provide services. And I noticed that was a connection to Hadley was one of the places that we were looking at. So I think that with all we do, even when we were working with Westfield State, the piece that I think is the important piece is that building capacity. And I, it's something that's been really ringing in my ears is because when we, when we looked for them to come and help us, it wasn't that we wanted them to come in and run it for us. It was about them coming in and helping educate us so that we could educate those around us. And so now in most of the programs I've developed over the last two years, including a program for kids with Asperger's Syndrome who needed some support outside the regular classroom, they were overwhelmed by being in the classroom all day and they needed work on executive function and social emotional skills and all of that. In those programs, there are partial inclusion. And so part of the goal for the teacher and part of the mandate for the teacher of that program is that they spend a significant amount of time in the regular education setting, training the regular education teachers. Because one of the problems what happens often in special education is that we become the holders of the magic pill. And, and we, that's a, that's a burden I'm not willing to put on people and expect people to know. Because the reality is there is no magic pill. It's all about good instructional practice. And so the more we can teach our regular ed teachers and our lunchroom staff and our custodians and about how to be good educators and how to, how to lift kids up, the better off we're all gonna be in the end. So I hope that answers, but within that, there's, there's a lot of work that can be done in terms of the partnering, community partnering. It has to be done.
So considering, I'm just wondering if I'm, considering you're in the five college area.
Sure.
And, you know, you mentioned Westfield.
Yeah.
Is that something that, you know, you thought about as you looked at our...
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I think about it in terms of that, in terms of the social work. You know, there, there are plenty of social work programs where there are grad assistants who are looking for opportunities. In our, we've been lucky enough, our transition program for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds is now outside of the high school. We've moved it to a separate site because those students wanted to feel more like community members rather than high school students. And because we've done that, we're in a, and we're at the Western Mass Hospital, which is a specialty hospital in Westfield. But in some ways, it's sort of broken out and created this sort of separate entity. And we have students coming from Bay Path and AIC and Westfield State and social work and rec therapy in all sorts of different, in transition because now there's a whole transition license. So we're now training transition specialists in that, in that program. So it's been very exciting and I think that we have to be using our universities to look for best practice. Unfortunately for us, many of our universities weren't, and colleges weren't focused on education. It was, when I went through, I went to UMass and when I was an undergraduate and even a graduate student there, there was some, some work being done in education, but it was very philosophical and it was very global. And now people are realizing, like I think our technical schools are realizing, we really have to be training our students to be specialists in certain areas. So there's more and more of these programs coming up. Bay Path is a big one that's really adding a lot in terms of special ed and programming. My hope would be that I could encourage a new administrator to come and do their practicum with me at some point. So to get again, another set of eyes and some new perspective. Cause I think that's a valuable, that's always, that's always valuable input.
Thank you.
Sure.
And finally, after having been through the interview process thus far, what else would you like to share with us about why you see yourself as a good fit for Granby? And are there any questions you would like to ask us?
Sure. Well, the other thing I didn't mention at the beginning was I did my student teaching at the West Street School. So this is like my full circle. I have to come back here. Yeah, it was, it was about twenty-two years ago. So, and I worked in the collaborative program with Nancy Hogan, who was a wonderful mentor for me my first six months of teaching. So that was pretty neat. I think that the thing I'd like you to know about me is that I love the question about transparency because I am, maybe to a fault at times, I am transparent. I, I sort of wear everything right out here. And, but I also, I think that people feel drawn to me because of that too. I feel like I'm one of those people, I think I'm a good listener, so people like to share with me and process with me. And so I think I bring, in terms of, I love humor. I think it's important in the work that we do because it's very stressful. So I love to be engaged with, with my peers and my colleagues. I think that so much of the work that we do is relational. And if you don't have relationships with parents and teachers and paraprofessionals, having been a paraprofessional, I have that empathic place I can come from even from, from those folks. So I think that that's something that I bring that maybe is unique as well as having worked in the many districts. I want you to be, to understand that I don't move around a lot. That's not my intent. I have about eight or nine years left before I retire. And I certainly would love to settle into Granby and, and bring Granby as far forward as I can and work with the new administration and work in, you know, helping to develop the new school. So that's something that I really look forward to. But because I've been in so many different places and worked with some amazing educators and administrators, I feel like I've really worked very hard to find the best in all of them and really help, you know, build that, that kind of professional work practice for myself. And so that I'm, you know, hardworking and I don't give up easily. And I really love our students with special needs, ELL needs, kids who are disenfranchised. I think it, it's very, that's where the reward comes from. You can't just do the administrivia because you lose, you lose focus. So I will always bring it back to students' best interest and that is really a critical piece for me. In terms of questions, I think I have a lot of questions, but they're more about what is the model and all of those kinds of things that I hope that I'm able to find out if you would give me the honor of selecting me for the position. So I hope maybe I can learn about that later. So I just appreciate the time you've given me.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Thanks.
Well, I guess that's it.
That's it.
Again, thank you very much for, for being here.
My pleasure. Great meeting you. Thanks. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I hope you all get home safely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
How are we doing on time?
Seven eighteen.
Just a few minutes, right?
Yeah.
Are we ready for our next candidate or should we just take another break until they are ready? Or is...
She's here.
She's here and Judy's bringing her in or?
Do you want a break? Do you want a break?
Does anybody need a break?
Um, no, I'm okay.
Okay, so we're good? I like the point we can ask questions and they don't have to do most of the talking. Kathy, Kathy is holding the magic box right there, the tissue. Especially for tonight.
Yeah.
All these, all these folks coughing. Actually, that, that one, one cough drop helped a lot.
Sometimes that's all you need.
Yeah.
She didn't tell you what was in it though, right?
She did not. And since, you know, you said it that way, I don't wanna find out at this point.
Some of them are outstanding.
Yeah, yeah. I like the fruity ones.
Hello again.
Hello.
Hi. I'd like to introduce you to Carol Hepworth.
Nice to meet you. Carol Hepworth. Nice to meet you.
Hi Jennifer. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
This is the hot seat.
All right.
Are there any questions?
Hi, I was just gonna say.
Some water for you?
Awesome. Well, thank you for doing it this evening.
Thanks for coming.
I thought of, well, waiting any more, any longer time, I was like, oh, you know, when you get ready for something and then all of a sudden the snow comes, I was like, you've gotta be kidding me.
Well, this also allows us to check everybody's surviving skills.
Well, I live in the base of the Berkshires, so I know how to survive.
Oh, good. That's good.
Beautiful.
Psychologically is another story. Weather.
Oh, I know, I know. We won't be playing ball very soon, that's for sure. Okay, let's make sure. I have a couple of questions I've got, so I don't forget everything. Okay. Oh, where's my question?
Close every question.
Yes.
Okay. So again, thank you for being here, especially on a beautiful day like this, making it here. Thanks for that as well. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna start with quick introductions of the school committee. So you get to know just a little bit about us. Then we'll turn it to you. We'll ask you to introduce yourself. And then we're gonna have a series of questions for you.
Okay.
So let me start very briefly. My name is Emre Avren. I am a member of the school committee. I'm also the chair of the school committee. And I've been on the school committee for four years. And I think I am the senior member of the committee, so that should tell you how new the committee is.
Yes, okay.
Welcome Carol, I'm Jim Petrus. This is my third year, I believe, and I'm a retired educator from this district.
Nice.
I'm Rae McCourt. This is my second year on school committee and I'm an educator as well.
I'm Jennifer Curran and I was applying to the school committee in September.
I'm Deanna Powsky and this is my second year also.
Cheryl Stan.
We never forget you Cheryl.
No.
We have to, we have to hear that.
I forget myself.
Yeah. So you have a copy of our strategic plan?
Yes.
I'm gonna start with that, but as I promised, we would like to hear about you a little bit before we get going as well. Just a little snippet about, about you.
Carol Hepworth, I'm a thirty-two-year veteran educator. I have spent all of my career, career in Holyoke Public Schools. I started as a bilingual severe special education teacher. No, I don't speak Spanish. They told me that that wasn't a requirement and I said, "How can that be?" But loved every minute of that. And actually, you know, I can hold my own. I'm a pretty good listener more than speaker. And from there, I became a language-based teacher. I worked under Esmond Iza, who was from Holyoke Hospital, speech and hearing, who trained me to be a language-based teacher. After that, inclusion was huge. Everybody wanted, you know, their children included. I totally agree with it. I had my classroom. They couldn't find anybody to do it. And so they kept putting the postings in my mailbox and saying, "Carol, you're the perfect person for this. You need to do this." So I met with the superintendent and I said, "Can I do both?" And he said, "Carol, that's not fair to both sets of families." So I said, "Okay, how about if I include all my kids?" And he said, "You could do that." So that's what I did. So I included all my kids and became the district-wide inclusion facilitator for Holyoke and did that for twelve years. And I had a short stint as a team leader when, when we had some trouble, which you guys know about also here, about holding on to a director of special education. So I ended up going from team lead, from inclusion facilitator to team leader for six months. And then they asked me to be the director of special education because we had seven years of a different person every year. And I said, "I don't know anything about that. I know the kids, I know the families, I know instruction." And they said, "Don't worry about it. We'll help you through it." So that was in two thousand and eight. So I've been in Holyoke as the director of special education since two thousand and eight, which is eight years. And loved every minute of it, you know? I have a great connection with kids, I have a great connection with parents. I believe in being in the schools. I'm excited that your, my office is gonna be in a, in a building, you know? I mean, I had to get in a car and I had to drive somewhere if I wanted, you know, spend some time with kids. I mean, the past, last year I did eighty-five walkthroughs a month, so I was in classrooms, but the focus was more on teachers, not so much on spending time with kids and actually seeing, you know, do they understand, you know, the instruction that's being provided to them? So I have two children. I live in the base of the Berkshires. And, and I'm looking for a district to share my love with.
Cool. Well, thank you for sharing that with us. So since you have a copy of our new strategic plan.
Yes.
What we wanted to start with is to get your impression and your understanding of the plan. And kind of give us your perspective on it from that special education perspective. How, how you would take this strategic plan and apply it to things that you do. Or from another perspective, how does it apply to things that you would like to do?
So my interview was, was great. You know, I met a lot of people around the table and I asked a lot of, you know, questions. And one of the questions I asked is, you know, what, what part of special education is, you know, broken that needs to be fixed or needs to be enhanced? And it was clear that there's not a continuum of services here for students. So I think, you know, my first line would be to come in and see what's working, you know, for our kids and, and, you know, what we need to either fix or enhance. But clearly you need a continuum of services for students. Inclusion isn't perfect for everyone, you know, so you need to have maybe, you know, some other options. And then again, you know, putting kids all in sub-separate, you know, when inclusion is an option. I'm a real proponent for inclusion. I really feel that kids learn best when they're around their peers. And, and I think that if you do it right and you provide the programming for kids, they can access that general curriculum, you know, with those supports. So I, I would be focused on making sure that we do have a continuum and that we're meeting all the needs of the students.
Is there anything specific that you saw in the strategic plan that caught your attention as far as...
Well, I, I saw that, that, you know, a lot of the things, you know, that you guys are right on track for. You know, you're, you're gonna hire, you've hired a superintendent, you're looking to hire a permanent director of pupil services. I see that you're gonna be breaking ground and, and, you know, building a new school so that it's all on one campus. There's talk in there about looking at curriculum and designing curriculum, work that's happening. Technology, you know, moving forward, the development of a technology plan. So there's a lot of, you know, some pieces that have been, that are, you know, been taken care of. The leadership pieces look like you're, you know, you'll have that solidified by, you know, the, the start of the school year. You're going to have, you know... You're going to have, you know, the building of the school started. And then, you know, now it's time, you know, for the new administration, you know, to take a look at what's here and then figure out what are those next steps, you know? Um, I, I did a lot of research on, you know, your, um, status and, you know, you're a level-two district, you know? But I did see that you, you, one of your schools was level-one, you know, and has dropped to level-two. So, um, I also noticed that, um, many of the kids, you're, you're not making your benchmarks. You know, you're not meeting your targets, you know, so we need to look at, you know, why is that? You know, you know, what, what are we missing?
Thank you. So the rest of the way, here's what we're gonna try to do. Uh, you have those questions in front of you as well. We have a series of questions and each one of us will ask one of those questions. And, um, we may have some follow-up questions, uh, for some of those.
Sure.
Okay, who was number one?
I'm first. So as you can see, this is a multi-part question. Um, so what do you feel is the role of support services in the development and implementation of the district's curriculum? And also, how would you work to ensure that the enforcement and follow-through on IEPs are continued seamlessly as students move from one grade to the next or from one building to the next? And that part of the question, if you can, uh, focus more on, on transition, which is, we've had a historical problem with transition between buildings.
Okay, so, do you, uh, okay, so as far as the, the development of curriculum, I, I, we certainly need to be in, involved in the implementation of the curriculum because certain students are gonna need certain accommodations. Um, so, um, you know, designing the curriculum, if you design the curriculum with the idea of providing, you know, accommodations too, then you've got it all in one place. And, um, I do know that in many of the curriculums that, that I was involved in, in Holyoke, we had sections that provided those, um, supports for teachers right there, you know, in, in the, um, curriculum frameworks when they were developed. Um, you know, so they had, um, strategies right there for, for teachers working with students. But I also believe that in the implementation of the curriculum, it's really important for the special education teacher to work alongside with the gen ed teacher. They need to be co-planning so that, you know, um, in, in the world I'm coming from, my special education teachers were the experts of their students. So we did a caseload model, which I'm not sure what kind of model is used here. But the idea was, is I had a caseload of eighteen students. I knew those kids, how they learned, what they needed, and it was my job to make sure that the teachers that that child sat in front of knew those things. And I supported making those accommodations, but I also required the teachers to be aware of them when they're planning. Oh, this is what I need to do, you know? And right in our lesson plan was a section for special education, you know? So that accommodations could be right, readily recorded in there. Okay, so transitions. Well, what we did when, when students changed schools is we had transition meetings, um, with, um, team leaders. Now, if, if the district doesn't have team leaders going from the different schools, then we would do them, I would say you would do them with the teachers. So you would meet with the teacher and exchange those folders, you know? Because the teacher in the third grade, or you're, you guys go from third to fourth. So the teacher in third grade should have all of her notes and all of her progress reports and have a pretty good handle on the, on the student that's moving up. So, you know, we would make time to make sure that those teachers can meet and talk about, you know, the learning of those students. I think it's also a great idea for those teachers in the fourth grade, they're gonna have these kids to come down and, and meet them and meet those kids and see, take it, you know, take, it does take time, but get in those classrooms and watch how they learn. You know, so that it's, it's not a surprise. Transition is really hard for kids, you know, because they lose all those connections. So if, if they have a familiar face, someone that they've met, you know, um, it's certainly gonna make it, certainly gonna make it easier for them.
Thank you. Um, the next question. How do you see yourself as part of a framework of collaboration and transparency in the context of the confidentiality that surrounds the students you serve? And how specifically would you engage families in this process?
Okay, how do you see yourself as part of collaboration and transparency and the content? Okay. Well, right off the, right off the bat for me, um, I'm certainly going to try and attend as many IP meetings as I can after I have an opportunity to read the files on all of the students. But, um, I'm not afraid to go to homes to meet with parents and, you know, um, I always had an open door policy in my office, um, and I've come to understand that it's not typical, um, based on some of my colleagues, but, um, and if a parent called my office, um, I have a logbook that I keep, and whether it's myself writing it down or, um, my assistant, um, you write it in black or blue, and I write, if, until I respond to that parent, until I make that connection with that parent, I put it in red. So I know when I get my logbook, whether or not I've touched base with a parent. And I, I have to say that I get back to every parent. If a parent is making the effort to call me because they're concerned about something, I will call them back. But I also want to make sure that parents know that there is a, a chain, somewhat of a chain of command. I'm certainly not gonna step on, uh, a principal's toe or, or even a teacher's toe if a parent hasn't, you know, started first with addressing it with the, with the teacher, with the assistant principal, with the principal. I certainly will talk with the parent, I will take some notes, and then I will send an email usually to the administrator of the building, asking them to reach out to the parent. Um, as far as confidentiality, a- absolutely, you have to be, everyone, member of the team needs to be, you know, be, uh, aware of confidentiality and they're not to, you know, discuss kids outside, you know, of, of the school setting. You know, I mean, the focus is on giving the children what they need so that they can be successful. Um, and I also believe that the IP, um, pair professionals need to know about the kids that they're working with. And oftentimes, um, they're not given that opportunity. Um, what we did in, um, what I instituted in our district is what we call a pair plan. So pairs know exactly what their responsibility is in regards to that student. And then we take those pair plans and we develop a binder for them, um, where there is a copy of the IP in there, but there's also a copy of the pair plan, letting them know what they're responsible for, and then there's activities that they need to do in data. Because ideally, I, I feel a pair professional is an extension of a teacher. They're, they're your arms. And, um, you know, you need to make sure that they're doing what they need to do and you need to be, as the teacher, you need to supervise those pair professionals and you need to support them and you need to, you know, um, when I first came in as director, we would hire pairs and we would point, you're with him. And they would just follow the kid around all day and tr- try to figure out what they were supposed to be doing. And then when I would go and I would say, well, you know, have you read the plan? And they'd go, well, the teacher won't let me, you know? And I said, okay, we can't do this anymore. So, you know, I designed the pair binders and, um, and I've had pairs come up to me and say, thank you. Thank you, I, I actually feel part of a team now. And they carry their binders around like, you know, and they can tell you, you wanna see his data, he's doing really good in this, or, you know? Because they're part of that team. They're, you know, they're not just following a student around. And one thing that was really interesting when we first did this was, you're very specific as to what the pair is doing. So it's not just, oh, he needs a para. Well, what does he need a para for? And, um, I had a great example of a student at one of our schools who had a full-time para. He only needed para thirty minutes a day. He needed someone to open him up the first five minutes of every period and he needs someone to close him down. He was on the autism spectrum and he had organizational difficulties. We had two different people, you know, they would open him up, shut him down, and then the next time it would be another. And his mom was thrilled because the independence that he developed, you know? We set him up with his iPad, we just made sure that at the end of every lesson, he had what he needed to, for homework or what he had to do, and then we opened him up, we made sure he passed in the stuff and got his iPad ready. But to watch the principal's face when we put this up on a, on a chart, you know, with a, you know, so it was the days of the, it wasn't, not the days of the week, it was the names of the pairs across the top and the times down the side. And we put kids' names and who was responsible. And I colored in yellow all the spots where the para didn't have anything to do. And the principal came in and said, what's the yellow? And I said, that's when the para's sitting in the library or in the cafeteria. And he goes, what can we do about that? I said, I'm sure you have other kids in your school that could use help. Plug them in. You know, plug them in. And I can tell you the pairs were thrilled to have, you know, direction and support and know what they were doing.
I just have a quick follow-up to, um, so you're talking about being part of a team and, um, one of the things that's important to Granby is re-establishing our community. And parents of special needs students can often feel pretty isolated. It's difficult for those parents to attend, you know, even open house because there's just not enough accommodations or, uh, sports, or just they don't feel comfortable signing their toddler for soccer. You know, what are your thoughts on that and have you, you know, bridged those gaps for families in power?
So, we, um, I, I've, I've had a few parents whose kids have participated in, in, um, sports, you know, with support. So, um, I had a, uh, student on the spectrum that went out for track. So we hired a para that ran alongside with him so that he could, you know, participate. Because ideally, they should have every opportunity to participate in all of those things. Um, the other thing I think is really important with parents of children with special needs is that they need, they need to get those, um, I used to do, in my classroom, I used to do postcards of when the kids, I'd catch the kid doing something good and I would write it on the postcard and I'd hand it to my para and I would say, label this to this parent and throw it in the mail. You know, they were already snapped. Because oftentimes, they're not getting those accolades. They're not getting those positive things to help them make, that make coming to school a positive thing. And so I think the more, more ways you can make the classroom and the environment inviting for parents and, and, you know, that, that peace builder things that you guys are talking about doing, I think is gonna be great. Because I think it'll dovetail into the high school, you know, restorative justice, you know? But it's at a, at a younger age type of, there's a lot of neat activities for kids to do, you know, about, you know, complimenting one another and highlighting those good skills the kids have. I was, we, we had a PAC in our district and again, just like you say, getting sometimes the parents to come. I do know one thing that, um, we did a couple of years in a row, um, was we did awards and parent, special ed parents, um, each parent could, um, award a certificate to someone in their child's life that, that had within the school, whether it was the bus driver, the cafeteria worker, the para, the gym teacher. And, um, so we, we did that and we had a big celebration, you know, where these parents got to, you know, say, you know, how important that person, you know, that wise, as you guys are doing this wise, wise person had, that person that did, you know, something above and beyond to make those, um, make their child's life better. So I think when you do things like that, that kind of celebrate, um, the things in their lives, I think parents are more willing to come. Uh, food's always great, you know, this little show, things like that, they like that too. Uh, I know whenever we fed, there was always, um, plenty. But I think, you know, when you celebrate some of the, the things in these kids' lives, I think you're gonna get their parents to come in.
Thank you.
Next Carol, talking about the goal of technology. How would you assess and recommend appropriate technologies to support students under your care?
So, I, um, I had, had in my previous district, a person that would come in and do an assistive technology evaluation. Um, I've also been involved with, um, CES, they do, you know, they have a, a wonderful tech program. The issue with technology is, is it's to provide independence. It's not just to give a child a computer. Because giving a child computers is not gonna give them independence unless they're versed in using it. So, I think, um, one of the things we did with our OT and PT is work with them on, on some simple things, you know, like when you're using an iPad, you have to do the, a swipe, you know? And for some kids, that was really difficult. So practicing some of those skills. Um, but I think, you know, every student is different as far as what technology that they would need. Um, I think, you know, I'm not an expert, so I would certainly tap into some of my experts. Um, one advantage of, of the fact I, you know, I have a lot of friends. So, um, um, you know, bouncing ideas off of, of people that I know. Um, I also have with me, you know, a list of, there's so much out there right now that's free. You know, that's, uh, you know, all you have, you know, sometimes you just have to sign up for it. Um, so there is, uh, you know, I have the resources to find someone to give, you know, to, to be able to look at a student and figure out what they need so that they can be independent. Because as I said, just giving, saying, oh yeah, he needs an, an iPad, is not gonna give the child the independence that they need. They need to know how to use that iPad, you know, to communicate, you know, or, you know, it's not just a, a, you know, a toy.
Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So the next question is about the physical space. And as you mentioned, we have, uh, this wonderful new school coming up in a couple of years. And as we were working on the initial design at least, there were, there was a lot of thought that went into the special education space as well. That said, we still have some opportunities to refine that design. So there are two parts, and I will just speak to both, uh, so you can, uh, uh, you know, uh, answer both, uh, parts. One is about having some flexibility to shape the space the way you would like to.
Okay.
The other is, we're talking about this building, uh, where we have, uh, uh, more defined space, so we have to play with what we have. And under those circumstances, what would be your approach? One is, you, something you can shape, uh, what would be your thoughts on that? The other one is, uh, pretty well-defined space, but I would like to hear your ideas about that, that space as well.
I, I need to know the kids. I mean, it's hard for me to talk about what you need for a space without knowing, you know, the population of childrens that, that you want to serve in that space. Um, I was on the, um, I was, uh, appointed by the previous mayor in Holyoke to be part of the building advisory team just for that reason. Um, and we were, um, they were renovating the high school. And it was for our life skills program and, um, you know, so we wanted to, you know, wanted to make sure that there were, you know, um, refrigerator stove, washer, dryer, you know? Um, we wanted it countertops at a certain height, you know? Some that were lower for kids in wheelchairs, you know? So we did, you know, a lot of designing of, of that classroom so that every student, whether they were able to stand or, or needed a wheelchair, would have countertop space access so that they could participate in whether it was laundry folding or if it was, you know, baking. Um, so, I, I would need to, to kind of know the population of students, um, but certainly have had experience with looking at a space and, and what we need to do with it, you know, to meet the needs of the students that you wanna serve.
So just, uh, just out of curiosity, uh, and to make sure that I'm understanding you correctly, um, the nature of students and their needs will change, uh, depending on who you are. Um, so, in general, uh, your approach to, and using the word space probably kind of, uh, is confusing as well. Just, we're not really talking about, uh, the, the square footage or anything, but the, the adequate space in this, what you were, uh, referring to. Is there anything that you would do if you do not know who these folks might be, say, next year or in three years? Because we only have so many opportunities to really address the needs, especially in this new school. Because we only have so many opportunities to really address the needs, especially in this new school.
Okay. Well, I, I would, it, it needs to be designed so that if you do have children with wheelchairs, that they can access the same things that their able-bodied peers can do. Um, you wanna make sure that there is, um, you know, the doors are accessible so that they, the students can open the doors themselves. Um, you know, if we're talking about kids that are, have, um, you know, fine motor difficulties or gross motor difficulties as far as opening doors. It's, it's ki- kind of hard to, you know, just pick a design without knowing, you know? I mean, it could be a, a, a space that's packed full with technology opportunities where, you know, kids can go who maybe have learning disabilities and need to write and you wanna make sure that the, the room has all of the latest, um, software for kids to help them, you know, brainstorm their ideas, um, but then be able to transform that, you know, through technology.
Thank you.
Oh, I picked them up, right? This question is regarding the proposal for social emotional learning that we're considering. If we were to approve the plan, how would you work with the community partners group in implementing it?
So, which one are you, which one are you referring to? Are you, we're talking about school-based, because you had a, a number of different ones.
Uh, I think we're referring to the plan in,
In general.
In general.
In general. Okay, so, um, right off the bat, the school-based services proposal was, um, to, um, and, you know, Judy can, I contacted Judy because as I read these, I had like, like this line of questions where I was like, "Okay Judy, who do I send these questions to?" Or is this, you know, is this, what this is about is more of a brainstorming. So, I'm, I'm very familiar with, um, school-based services and their, their work, um, in designing. So, they're, they're looking at designing, um, you know, a classroom for you and returning students. So, you know, kinda wanted to know how many students are you talking about returning? You know, um, I wanted to know the, the, um, background, the credentials of the staff that, you know, that they're proposing to provide to you. You know, are they, um, you know, they're talking about, uh, lead case managers and two interventionists. Is the case manager a clinical social worker, you know? Um, if not, who is going to provide that clinical piece to this class? Um, it talks about twelve, twelve students. Um, I, you know, so they're, you know, like I had a lot of, lot of questions. Um, I, they do good work. I, you know, I've had a, a really good working relationship with them. Um, we did a hybrid, you know, we didn't get all our staff from them. So, we hired some of our own, um, that worked alongside their staff. Um, you know, but I did, you know, have some questions, you know, because clearly, um, I wanted to know, um, what the disabilities were of the students that you were talking about bringing back, what schools they had, were, are coming from, 'cause that, you know, tells a lot. And, you know, it talks about hiring a teacher. I don't know if you have a teacher in mind, so, you know? But as far as, you know, there's a lot of things that have to happen to do this classroom. You know, there needs to be a, uh, timeout space identified and, you know, supplied with, you know, um, beanbag chairs and things like that. Um, clearly, there needs to be a referral process as to who goes in that. One, one thing, when I think, when I think about, um, you know, all this work on social emotional learning, um, I, you know, I've read a great, you know, a great book that I worked, used with, with my staff, um, of our program like this. Um, it's called Lost at School, where, you know, um, kids with challenging behavior, they, they want, they know how to behave, but they're, they're, you know, they have some skills that, that are just underdeveloped that we need to work on so that they can master that. So, having a class like this and having it in a school where they can then transition is optimal. Because, um, in my experience, we had a separate school. So, now you have kids in out-of-district placement, you know, we're bringing them back, you know? So, bringing them back brings them to a school, but having them here provides you the opportunity to gradually include them. You know, so you can start with their strength. They're really good at math, you start with that math class and you put them in there and then you, you build on that. Because they're not, you know, our program, they were off-campus. When you brought them back, it was like throwing them out of the nest, you know? They had no, no supports where they were. So, um, having this classroom in your school allows you to do this gradually. Having, um, people in here that have the skills to work with this population is huge. Um, making sure that they're all, um, have de-escalation training. Um, and, you know, some of them having restraint training in the event that you, you know, that you do have students that, that, that are aggressive. But I do wanna make sure that we have that clinical piece because that's what we're trying to, to do here. You're, you're trying to model an out-of-district placement, you know, where the ratio is smaller, um, but they also have the clinical staff. So, we need to make sure that if we, if we open a class like this, that you have that clinical staff. And it, and it's, you can't say, you know, like, I don't know how many you're talking about, so it makes it hard. If you're talking about two or three, then yes, maybe the, um, social worker that's assigned to the high school is, you know, can work that into our schedule. But if you're talking about more than that, you're gonna need someone dedicated unless this lead case manager has that, those skills. The other one that I thought was, that, um, I, I saw that you have people from River Valley. The one thing that's nice, by using River Valley, you can use, um, you know, their insurance, parents' insurance. So, it's not, you know, it's, you, River Valley gets paid through their insurance and it's not a cost to the district. Um, also, I saw Bridges, which is another, um, you know, free option, you know, to kinda bring some supports, you know, into, um, into the district. The in-school model, this, um, I thought was a nice, um, transition idea for the sixth graders. So, because you go six to seven, um, and based on their price, it would be like, um, forty-five hundred dollars for all of the sixth graders to be able to participate in this, it's, uh, monthly, um, groups of ten, um, with a person. And I think, um, that the, the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Twenty-first century grant could help fund this. Um, but the grant is due tomorrow, so I don't know, I don't know if anybody has done that. So, um, I just, I did write that down here just in case. I figured someone could rush tomorrow and try to do that.
Actually, can you nail it really quick?
Judy's on it. Judy's on it.
Judy's on it.
Okay. Um, you know, but I thought that, you know, because that is a transition and transition is really hard for kids. And, you know, I mean, I think one thing that's gonna be nice is when you're all in one little place. You guys will be able to do, you know, that nice transition time or have that, you know? Have those, you know, um, sixth graders, you know, go to the seventh grade field day or whatever, you know? So that, you know, you're kinda, you know, building that bond. But this here, I think, works nicely with, um, with your peace builders type, type of thing. It's about, you know, them working on their, on their skills. You have CES here in the, in the district, but I did notice, um, you know, CES is offering too to do some after-school work. But I read, I think in the school committee minutes, something about that not all the students can, uh, afford it or access it, so there was gonna be some work on trying to do some, um, levelizing so that other parents could get, um, be able to participate in that. Um, but I think, you know, certainly, um, I think the peace builder thing for the younger grades is a great match. Um, I liked the, um, what's it called, the room? The, um,
Fucking room.
Yes, yes, yes. I thought that, that was, yeah, I have that. I thought that was great. I loved the, um, the matrix. Um, but yeah, the reflection center. And what was nice about the reflection center was that you didn't have to, it, it, it's available for everyone. So, it's not, um, you know, just students with special needs that are having emotional problems. It's everyone. Um, the other thing I noticed is that you have, uh, quite a few students qualifying under health um, for special ed. So, I'm gonna be, I would be interested in looking at that to see, you know, is it, uh, again, you know, are, are there some lagging skills that, you know, as students having that, you know, that we could address so that, you know, that it's not through an IP, you know? Just providing them the accommodations that they need in a classroom to be successful. Okay, lost my question. No good, because I lost my questions in my bounder.
So, after having been through the interview process thus far, what else would you like to share with us about why you see yourself as a good fit for Granby? And are there any questions that you would like to ask us?
So, um, I, I love what I do and, um, you know, the fact that I reside from Holyoke. Um, I, I'm looking for a place where I can, I can share my love of education. And, um, and I love the idea that you're in a school and that you can, I can go down the hallway and I can sit in on a class. And I can actually make sure that, you know, what are, what my teachers, my special education teachers or my therapists are doing are, are making a difference. Um, I, you know, it's small enough that I will know everyone. I will know my kids, I will know their parents, um, and that's really exciting for me. Um, I had seventeen hundred kids I was responsible for and I can tell you honestly, I probably knew a thousand of them really well, um, you know? And I think a lot of that was the fact that I had an open-door policy. And I, I never, I always returned my phone calls to my parents 'cause I felt if the parent was reaching out to me and felt that it was that important, that I was gonna get back to them. So, I did know a lot of my kids. Um, and, you know, when I would do my walkthroughs, which were actually focused on something else, um, I always made sure that I would, before I would leave, would squat down next to a few of my kids that I would, and ask them how things are going and, you know, check in with them. Or, um, you know, I would get invited to, you know, read a book for a certain class or, you know, come to our graduation and, you know? So, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to being connected, you know, where I know everyone and I know, you know, the kids individually. I mean, I do, um, I do, in my, you know, previous role, um, I would go in and I would observe a child. You know, if I had people questioning, you know, I don't, you know, I, I had no problem going in and observing a child and taking that time to actually look. And then, um, bringing in the people then I would thank, you know? Like someone would say, "Oh, this, you know, he definitely needs to go to this program." Because I really believe that there's a lot of people that think special education is a place. It's not a place. It's a, it's a service that we provide. It's not this kid belong, this kid belongs in this self-contained or this kid belongs in this program. It's us providing services. And so, sometimes I would step in and I would say, "No, we can do this here. You know, we need to do this, we need to do this. You know, he needs, you know, the teacher needs to do this." So, I think it's, again, you solve the problems of what, what the kid's skills are lacking so that they can access and it, you know, they'll feel better because they can do it. And, um, and I, I think having a small district, uh, you know, I'll be able to do that and do it well.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Enjoyed the conversation. Does anybody have any?
So, I, just, yeah, I just have one question.
Sure.
So, are you decision gonna make this tonight? Is this something that you're gonna wait multiple days to do? You know, how's that going?
Tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful.
But if our previous performance is any indication, it may be, uh, after midnight. We don't, we don't know, just.
Wow.
Since four thirty this morning.
Judy said she's not gonna let that happen.
Yes, she's gonna, she's gonna hold us to it.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I hope you enjoyed it. I had to bring a chauffeur to get me here to make sure. He was worried about me driving by myself.
Yeah, we got a little cloud for you. I don't know if she noticed it, but.
Nice seeing you again.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Miss Teague.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Carol.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Carol.
I'm hoping we can take a little break.
Yeah, here's a link. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good night.
You too.
You too, thank you. Take a break. Anybody? Is it me for a break?
Yes.
All right. So, I will start with this. Uh, you know, uh, I, it must be me, I enjoy these conversations. And I actually heard, heard a lot of different things, a lot of, uh, things that piqued my interest. But as I was, uh, telling everyone, um, I know that we have a lot of folks who have been in special education before, so I'm gonna first, uh, listen to everybody's, uh, opinions. But before that, I wanted to see if you have, uh, things to share with us as far as the reference checks that you've done.
Sure. Uh, so I did conduct reference checks. Um, uh, I will say that, uh, both candidates are extremely talented, um, and come with, uh, very distinct skillsets. Um, and their references spoke to that. Um, I think Catherine, um, back up just a second. Both of the candidates, the references, um, I like to hear that, um, you would, you would not make a bad choice. Uh, this, this is an outstanding candidate. Um, and both of, uh, both Carol and Catherine, um, all of the references said, uh, that they would be an excellent addition, uh, to Granby. Uh, the references, uh, know Granby, um, uh, know about, uh, Granby's, uh, demographic, your size, um, and also know, uh, that we are looking for stability. Um, and that came out in our conversation at, at the subcommittee, uh, for hiring. With respect to, um, Catherine, uh, her references, uh, spoke to her program development and her strengths in those areas. Um, also, her openness to parents, um, and families, um, and dedication to, and advocating, as she spoke to, uh, for the kids, uh, and their families. And, and for Carol, I think it spoke to the breadth of experience that she's had in leading a department, uh, leading the special education, uh, department, uh, for Holyoke. Um, and really what that means in terms of planning professional development, motivating staff, um, uh, teachers, developing teacher leaders, um, and all of that work that Carol's been involved in, uh, really from pre-K all the way through the transition. So, I don't know if you have specific questions about the references or?
Anyone?
Not specific, but I think that's, that's pretty helpful.
Okay. One thing that actually wasn't, uh, clear to me is that Carol had resigned from, do, do we know when she resigned from that position? 'Cause I think the, uh, um,
I don't.
Resume still shows, uh, current.
Right. I don't, no, I know she announced it at the first round of interviews that she, um, either had resigned or was in, in process of resigning and that's why she was, um, interviewing.
And it is related to the current situation in Holyoke?
Yeah, and her decision really to move forward, as many of us need to do at times.
Yeah. I think we understand that well now, right? So, um, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for taking the time to make the calls. So, let's just have this conversation and I will, I will echo what, uh, Judy is hoping is that we don't, we don't make this another,
Two-hour night.
Two-hour conversation.
That cannot happen.
Well, I think we have both good candidates, but I would think, uh, again, looking at what our special ed department's been through the last, I would have to say five years, maybe even then.
So. Who's counting?
That's right. Let me go back a couple, yeah, five, yeah, seven is probably perfect.
There's some records now, thank you.
Stay uncorrected.
Well, I went back five, that's right.
A voice crying in the woods.
She's absolutely right. If Lynn was here, she'd probably said it's fifteen. Both probably do the job, but I think, I think, uh, Carol probably brings a greater experience from doing a little bit longer and might be the good staple person that needs to come in and take it, take it for the years to come.
Mary?
Um, I, I, I think they were both good in different ways. Um, the things that I picked up on personally with Catherine was that I, I felt like she was, um, more organic. She tended to want to be more part of, um, going into classrooms and really knowing the kids, although Carol said that she wanted to know the kids as well. Um, the one thing I kept picking up on that Carol said and I don't, I, I'm sure that it wasn't meant that way, but I kept hearing, I respond when parents call me. That's good, but what about the parents who don't? And I'm, I'm sure that that's not an issue, but it just, it kept catching me. Every time she would say it, I thought, there's plenty of parents who won't call you, but they'll be out there saying stuff out there. So, so I mean, you know, that just kept kind of coming back and hitting my brain. Um, but I think they were both good candidates, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to mention for Carol's, um, discussion of paras and partnering and how they're arms of the teachers and how important that is, um, to make sure that they're receiving the information and the training. Um, she really spoke specifically to plans for transition, um, really got concrete and specific. And not, not, not just what she would do, but this is what I've done, this is how we had success. And had data to back all of that up. I really appreciated that. Um, she seems to have, um, just such a wealth of experience leading, you know, um, and just, um, knowing that she mentioned the seventeen hundred students and she knew a thousand. And coming to Granby, how much time that she will feel she has to really dig in, um, and, and make some really important changes for Granby. I think that's a great opportunity for us. But both great. I mean, I, nothing stuck out as, you know, I mean, Catherine seemed to, um, have such great ideas, um, loved some of the work that we've done. I just felt that Carol had more, a little bit, maybe a little bit more experience, especially talking about our social emotional, um, program that we wanted to try out maybe.
Thank you.
Uh, so I thought both candidates were very strong in, um, very different ways also. And so the two questions that stuck out for me, uh, the space question, Catherine's answer, I thought was really thoughtful, well thought out about, um, you know, down to things about location in the bathroom and I just thought it was, it was more intuitive, um, the answer as, as compared to Carol's answer. I thought, um, it just didn't feel as intuitive as, uh, well, I don't really need to think about this too much, you know, it was kind of a no brainer for Catherine. And on the social emotional question, Catherine's answer, uh, I thought was a, a bit more innovative. Um, you know, using some of the resources in our area with other schools and colleges, I thought was pretty, pretty, pretty progressive. Although I did like Carol's answer, um, when she said, I have so many questions, I thought that was spot on too because I think it's important to know the qualifications of the programs you're bringing in and, uh, especially of the trainers. And so, you know, when she, when she answered that, I was, okay, well, that's really, that's a really good answer too. Uh, so I have to say I, I was going back and forth. Um, for some reason, I think I'm more in Catherine's camp right now. Um, I'd like to answer about wanting to end her career here, you know, for the next eight or nine years. I think it's important for us in having continuity and consistency. And I guess I, uh, question Carol, she has been in Holyoke her entire career, so that, um, I don't know if that's a strength or a weakness, I don't know, but I, I just thought, you know, um, Catherine had more diversity, more variety. And again, I'm not sure if that's a strength or a weakness, but it is something I'm pointing out nonetheless.
Thank you. So, again, I'm glad that we have you all here who, uh, had previous exposure to, uh, you know, special education and things that are important. From my, uh, perspective, I, I really enjoyed the, again, I really enjoyed the conversation with both. Uh, I don't know which one of you said it, but, uh, one thing that, uh, immediately hit me is that there's a more personal touch with Catherine and, uh, academic and administrative touch with Carol. Uh, no right or wrong, but, uh, that's, that's what I could see. Um, and I think they are, they approached almost everything from those, th- those, uh, standpoints that, you know, I, I would like to do, uh, um, you know, your example, uh, Deanne of immediately focusing on how I would structure the room because, you know, some students may need this and that. Um, Carol is well thought out from, uh, from a different perspective that she tries to visualize things and, uh, do it that way. But I heard a lot of great things from both of them. Uh, one, uh, Catherine, first of all, the inclusion thing, which they both mentioned, but Catherine, uh, mentioned it in ways that, uh, made me feel comf- comfortable that, you know, we, uh, I would include everybody, communicate with people, uh, identify the needs, uh, for, uh, what we're gonna do, uh, with this space, uh, in a thoughtful way before I jump into spending money or spending time on, you know, reshaping, redesigning or refining the space. Um, the one thing that they both, um, focused on, but I think I heard, uh, again, more, uh, personal touch from Catherine was how they would like to keep students in district. But hearing it from both of them was really refreshing that, you know, they had both creative ways of, uh, trying to keep the students, uh, in district. Um, with the, uh, continuity of services question that you were asking, rightly or wrongly, I mean, this is my perspective again, just, I thought, um, Catherine, uh, had to think about that a little more and put in some context, uh, because she was trying to personalize it. Uh, again, just, you know, answer it that way. From that more academic perspective, uh, for Carol, it came easier to say, you know, we have all the information, basically exchange the information, folks who, uh, are gonna receive, the students are gonna, uh, see what's, what's, uh, coming to them. So that's basically the transition. Uh, I don't know whether that's always done that way, but that's what I, uh, I heard. The, a couple of things that I've heard that really piqued my, uh, attention and interest were, uh, one related to, uh, I think this is around question two answer, uh, and the other one, uh, question five about the social emotional learning. Uh, on the second question, when Carol was answering, she, uh, focused on a couple of things that I really, uh, care about. Uh, this is my personal perspective on the thing. One was the visual management piece of it, which, you know, I have a board. I show where we're not really making good use of our professionals' time and when the superintendent asked, I said, hey, you know, this is a time, basically, they can do something, uh, something else with, they might have, and they must have some other interest and what's, uh, what better opportunity, uh, to, to use them where they might want to be. The second thing was around recognition, recognizing students, not, you know, uh, always the professionals, but also recognizing students so that they, uh, get enticed, uh, to come back to school, they just find, uh, their place in school. And the answer related to question five, uh, it was that, uh, you know, I would not do this, I would not do that approach, which was a, and she called it a hybrid. We were doing this hybrid, uh, approach, uh, to it. But in a way, uh, she mentioned this gradual inclusion of students that we would like to bring back to the district as opposed to just bringing them back and putting them in a, uh, an environment where they may get lost or they may be shocked. Gradually just, uh, identify their strengths and bring it back in. So, um, again, for the uneducated me, uh, compared to, uh, you all, this is, uh, the difficult, uh, decision. But where I saw things and where I heard things, I loved the individual touch and the personal touch from Catherine. But I, uh, I liked the experience that came from Carol. Uh, and I had the same thought, uh, Deanne, you know, just that she spent her entire career in one place, but when you look at the resume, she moved, uh, she came in, uh, for this position and she moved to another one. I, I, I hope that's an indication of appreciation of what she was able to do in those different capacities and that's why she was there. And on the other side, of course, Carol, just, you know, she brings that breadth of experience because she was able to see different things done and, uh, said in different areas. One last point, when, the last time I was part of, uh, special education, uh, interviews, one thing that, uh, folks around the table talked about was, uh, being personally invested in a way. And I think there's, uh, something to be said about that, at least to a certain extent. So Catherine, uh, brings that personal touch from that, uh, uh, point of view as well, that, you know, she brought up her, uh, her own experience, personal experience with special education, so, and she used the word empathy many times. So that, uh, uh, that empathy and understanding what needs these students may have may be coming to her, uh, a little more easily. So those were my observations.
Yeah, I guess that's a really good point. The question, the question becomes, what is it that our district really needs?
Right.
In a, in a special education or pupil services director, right? Is it, do we need somebody who is more about the personal touch or do we need somebody, you know, with a higher level of experience, you know, as you're saying, this, the, the more academic piece? And I don't know, I, I'm not as familiar with the special education. I just know that what we've been missing and we've been missing, um, that continuity, that, uh, you know, if, if, if a parent calls, making sure they get the phone call back, making sure that there's follow-through, the personal touch, right? I mean, I, I know in special education, that's really important because it's hard enough. There's enough challenges with the laws and the regulations and.
But parents are scared, you know, parent, parents, we forget sometimes when we're talking about education, that parents, especially of those with special needs, have their own fears that are happening. And, and it is intimidating to come into a school setting where, especially if you're not an educator and you feel like everybody knows some, some stuff that you don't know, and it's easier, easy to feel like you're gonna get bowled over, so, which is why they come with, you know, these, these, uh, you know, guard dog advocates because they feel like they have to. Um, so personally for me, that, that personal touch is important. You know, the, the administrative academic piece is also important, but I, I feel like both of them have that. Um, I just feel like Catherine had more of a personal feel.
Just gonna throw a curve ball at you. Um, coming from my perspective, I don't need the director of pupil services to be all that sweet and empathetic with me. I need someone to get things done. And constantly, as a parent of a child with intense special needs, I honestly, at this point, everyone is very nice. And I'm very thankful for nice. Nice only gets you so far. I need action. I, I honestly, I don't need that person to sit across the table from me and pat me on the head. I'm an intelligent human being and my son has special needs, so what are we gonna do about it? And how are you gonna ensure that when he goes from fifth grade to sixth grade to seventh grade on through his life, that he can be a successful independent adult? I need the parent to be nice. I need the special ed teachers to be, to have that personal touch. But above that, I want someone to hold them accountable. And I felt that Carol absolutely had that over Catherine.
Well said. I think, I think we're forgetting the fact that we do have, we have very good people working with our special ed kids in the district.
Excellent.
You know, um, and they need that leader with their proper experience, which I go back to again, that I think Carol can bring the most. I, I really think that she'd be the best fit for us for the, for the years ahead. You know, we, we have no idea when someone comes in, how long they're gonna stay.
Right.
It's just a guess, you know, they're not, you know, we're not locking them in, saying, you gotta stay here or else, or else what? You know, this doesn't happen in education, it doesn't happen. We just hope that, you know, I think Carol will be the one that will come and do that. So with that, I should just make a motion that we would offer the position of director of pupil services to Carol Hepworth.
No, somebody can second the motion and then.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, one thought I'm, then I'm gonna turn to Shirley if you don't mind. Um, I, I hear what you said, but, uh, in the few examples that I had, you know, people directly, uh, calling or approaching and, uh, uh, feeling the need to talk about their experience. The one thing that I consistently heard is that they, unless there is that empathy and that emotional intelligence to connect with those folks, sometimes regardless of the, uh, the level of academic excellence, there, there might be a disconnect. And folks, you know, for instance, if they don't feel like, hey, you know, I need an IEP here, just, uh, and I'm not getting it or I don't get things on the IEP that I think should be there and I really don't get answers to my questions, but there are some answers. It may be a disconnect. But I, I absolutely hear the rest of, of the argument and this is not to endorse or, you know, go the other way. But one thing that I wanted to find out from you, if you don't mind, if you have any information on this, is this. Based on what we heard, we just had a nice conversation, that's good. Um, was there any indication during your conversations, your reference checks, as to how these folks work within the school, uh, district? And how they interact with folks who are working with them, uh, special ed, uh, staff, per- uh, paras, uh, teachers, uh, y'all, the stu- is, is there anything that you heard?
Yeah, um, certainly, when I spoke, um, with Carol's references, uh, that was very clear. Um, that her staff, uh, admired and worked very hard for her, uh, appreciated how hard she worked for them. Um, Carol brought to the table, um, the development of professional development, um, and when she, um, developed programs, um, brought in the, the viewpoints of staff, um, into creating the programs. Um, it wasn't as clear, uh, from Catherine's references, uh, that that was a similar strength. Um, although, you know, Catherine's experience in program development, um, is very strong. Um, you know, from my perspective, um, in what I've seen in Granby, um, and what I've heard in terms of the, uh, conversation at the, uh, subcommittee, um, is that stability is, is critical. Um, I equate stability with strong leadership. Um, and so, um, you know, really looking for, from my perspective, somebody who can hit the ground running, um, and, um, does have that breadth of experience uh, that can, um, very quickly, I think, look at the landscape, um, and develop some action steps, um, with, with her staff, um, with the families, um, and, and really bring people together around a vision for special education overall. Um, and that is programming, professional development, paraprofessionals, families, and I think Carol spoke very much to that ability to, to do that.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the first things that she said, uh, stuck with me throughout, and it may not be a significant thing, but I thought it was important, that she said something like, I'm not afraid to go people's homes.
Right, I wrote that down.
Yeah. Um, so I thought it was a good indication that, you know, I'm invested enough that I'm gonna make this. Otherwise, uh, it's something you said earlier, you know, just, okay, you know, that we have seventeen hundred students, a thousand of them, uh, are known or a thousand of them maybe get the call back, but what do we, I did not, I did not get the sense that they were excluded, but I think it was, uh, her way of saying, if you care to call me and ask for my help, I'll make my, uh, best to make sure that I respond to you. I'll make my, uh, best to make sure that I respond to you. And even that visual management piece came, I mean, for a large district, you have to do something like that, so that was creative. Anyway, thank you for sharing that, I appreciate it. I just wanted to understand that connection with, uh, within the school district as well. Any other comments, questions? Um, so what, the motion that we have is to, uh, offer the position of special educate, um, people, uh, Director of Pupil Services uh, to Carol He- Hepworth. And we have a second as well.
I have a second.
Okay, so we have no other comments, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it wasn't a two-hour conversation.
Wow, you guys are good. Awesome.
Did she promise you chocolate or something?
No. Which could come handy right now.
You want me to go get that?
There's dishes and move this off.
All right. So how do we, uh, do the announcement and, uh, reaching out to the candidates?
Um, do you wanna go on now? I'll take the break.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably do it while you're over with this stuff.
Sure.
Okay.
Cheryl, I understand you'll, you'll do it?
I just thought your resume is, you know, you know, like, ask around the whole campus.
Okay. You're gonna be doing it, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
She's off.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, uh, good conversation.
Thank you.
That was good. They were both great.
So now we're back to the rest of our brief evening.
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna whip right along here.
Uh, is it, is, um, my eyes are, uh, is it really snowing again out there?
No, don't say that.
It's your eyes.
My eyes?
I won't have a rise. I'm just gonna say you can see it.
Good. Good. All right. So we have our minutes from, uh, March twenty-first. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-first?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any edits, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Um, next, uh, section is visitors' comments. We do not have any visitors, so we will move to the reports and recommendations from our superintendents.
Alrighty, I did send you an update to the FY seventeen budget. And, um, a memo to kinda go with it to kinda highlight some of the changes. If I were to put the changes in, or the increased ask into something that would be quick and dirty, it would be technology and building maintenance. That's, other than salaries, that's really where the majority of your increase is going. Two areas that have been very much neglected over a fair amount of time. And, um, what this plan does is tries to remedy both of those things. Both within the budget and within, uh, the capital plan that we can, uh, speak to. I did send you a memo in terms of just some of the changes, um, that were pretty big in each of the detail tabs of the budget. Um, and I'll just go through some of the, the super large ones. For example, in the central office, under District Info Management and Tech, um, that salary increase in there is not David's big raise, but it is to get him some help. He right now is a one-man shop in a district that has a strategic goal of trying to use technology to advance curriculum. And to expect him to be able to do this by himself is not realistic. So, um, my, uh, recommendation to you after his request is that those, um, positions be supported. At least the, uh, full-time tech person, um, is about thirty-five hundred dollars in there for a summer helper as well. If we had to go without one, that would be the one I would say go without, but he really needs a full-time set of hands at this point. Things are, are moving forward fast and furious. There are things that are happening here at the junior, senior high school with regard to, uh, virtual high school, with regard to, um, you know, AP, uh, Advanced Placement Computer Science courses, et cetera, that just really requires an increase in an infusion of technology, but it also requires the supports to make sure that the systems can run so the kids can access them. So again, to expect David to do that on his own, I think, is not realistic. So I think that's a huge, uh, piece, um, that would, uh, go from there. The other thing in that particular part of the budget, which is under the central office, um, in terms of the, uh, info and, uh, finance and administrative, uh, services, is the increased contracted services. And that's basically, um, there hasn't been a clear delineation in the past with regard to site licenses and how things are being paid and from what. So what we've done is put together a plan where everything that is a district-based license, for example, our student information system services the whole district. Our robocall system services the whole district. Our Microsoft license services the whole district. Our supports for the infrastructure backbone services the whole district. That we are purposefully putting them in this line as a district-wide expense. So that there's a clear plan of what's being paid out of what buckets, because that's not real clear at this moment, and I think it's just years of backing into a number. So this was part of the whole zero-based, uh, approach to budgeting.
Is that, is that about a money the same as was in last year's budget, but regards to where it was? Are we talking the same amount of money?
We are not, we're talking some increases. Uh, one is due to the, um, server meltdown that we had over the summer and then putting in new servers with redundancy and cloud-based, um, stuff going on, that's an additional ask, um, to be able to do that.
So about how much more would that be than was this past year? Just to get some idea, because we're gonna, we're gonna have to keep asking these questions, I think.
No, that's quite all right. Let me just, uh, pull up that particular...
Approximately.
Worksheet, so I can, uh, answer your question a little more, um, accurately. So, um, let's see. And I, to be honest with you, I think some of these things, people just grabbed lines in the past because it wasn't clearly delineated where things were gonna come from. So I don't think there's been a clear spending plan, period, with regard to this.
But they found the money somewhere. That's what I'm sorta asking.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, money was found in, in buckets, but, you know, then you would have things like maintenance... No, seriously, and this is part of why your maintenance budget has been overspent, because some of the tech stuff was taken out of the maintenance line. I mean, things were kind of done because it wasn't a clear budget plan around this stuff. So you're looking at things like the financial software that runs payroll and, um, accounts payable. Obviously, we're gonna change to soft write, so that may be able to come off the top. That's five, that's fifty-two hundred dollars. We've got some advanced support, um, for, uh, the infrastructure backbone at, um, you know, it's a hundred dollars an hour, or, uh, excuse me, a hundred hour, hundred hours at a hundred and forty dollars an hour is what acuity charges. Microsoft Office, Microsoft Operating System, there's another five thousand. The Teach Point about Educator Evaluation Software, um, that's a couple of thousand. The email and, uh, Google Doc support, that's eighteen hundred dollars. The management console that takes care of firewall, et cetera, that's thirty-five hundred. The antivirus is another five thousand. You know, the student information system, which was being parsed out by each individual school, bringing it together is thirteen thousand, one seventy-six. We're looking to switch to a new gradebook system that, um, is more with, uh, Reddycar. That's another fifteen hundred, but it's less than the headline that we were using. The connected, uh, notifier, um, that's twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, the, uh, special education database, that's thirty-two fifty. You know, when, uh, new phones were put into the district, unbeknownst to David, because it was done without involving him in the decision, at the point in time was that there's software support that has to be done from Valley Communications, that was not budgeted for. So, you know, again, we're looking at about eight, nine hundred dollars for that. Uh, web hosting for the district, again, that was parsed out by building, so it's in there for about six thousand dollars. You know, deep freeze, which means that once a student logs off of a machine for the night, the machine sort of resets itself so that, you know, you don't have any kind of funky stuff going on. So that's like a bu- a thousand dollars. You know, some of those kinds of things. So those are all things that are part of what it takes to run the backbone of the district, that have been parsed out here, there, everywhere.
Which, which we can't think of getting rid of.
No, because it is the backbone of what runs the district.
It's just, it's there because it is, but I mean, I understand you're putting it in one place, but if it's the same thing that was paid for this past year, and if it's in there again, granted with some increases for this or that, then that speaks for itself, can't do without it.
Mm-hmm. Right. So again, but it, this more clearly delineates the plan, so the software asks in the individual buildings in the technology department. Those things are more limited to, um, you know, the reading counts software for our elementary students is only the two elementary schools, so it is purposefully charged to the two elementary schools. Virtual high school, the fee that it takes to run the virtual high school, that's only at the high school, so it's paid for out of the high school budget. So it's, again, having David have a solid spending plan, that he knows which accounts these things are coming from. Oftentimes, he comes to me and asks me, where should I take this from? Because again, there has not been a good spending plan in place. So that's, that was the whole purpose of this zero-based budgeting process, was to make sure that there were spending plans in place to take care of this stuff. So, you know, um, I think that accounts payable has found pockets of money that, you know, have been used for some of these things. But again, to clearly delineate this is the line it comes from is gonna make it much easier, A, to track spending, and B, to know where we are from year to year. So, um, that's, you know, huge. Also in the central office line, the transportation for special education shows an increase because we have increased the numbers of students that we are sending out of district. There is a potential to save some of that money, um, should we offer that structured learning center, uh, classroom here at, uh, Granby Junior Senior High School. Again, the increase in the contingency line is to cover emergency and unanticipated expenses. Recent analysis of the budget over the last couple of years shows that, uh, you know, there've been some things that have been unanticipated. And that we've either had to make cuts in some areas to fund these things, or we've had to go back to the town to ask for extra money. So, um, that's to take care of that. In the area of pupil services, um, I did put a placeholder in there with regard to, uh, the director's salary. Obviously, that's something that Cheryl will need to negotiate, and, uh, you know, where we land in the end, um, we'll derive what that number actually is. In the psychologist and ETL salaries, um, there's a decrease there because the psychologist is sprinkled throughout the district based on where, um, the psychologist's time seems to have, um, found itself throughout the budget. So it's not reflected in this, in this particular single line. We're also recommending that the elementary education team leader position be eliminated and that we use those funds to fund a special education, that extra special education teacher at, uh, East Meadow School that was requested by Jen Champagne. We feel that, that, that those monies would be better spent indirect services to students. We eliminated the ETL at the secondary level this past year, and so, uh, liaisons are picking up those duties and the director is filling in where, um, the director needs to on team meetings, and that seems to be working pretty well. So we just feel like that would be something where, let's put the money into the classroom where it's really necessary. Um, let's see. Uh, the other, uh, piece too is that I decreased the amount in contracted services in pupil services because the projection right now for this year for a behavior specialist or an ABA consultant is approximately sixty-five thousand dollars for only two days a week of service. I've been in conversation with the, um, superintendent from the Hathley Public Schools, and we are probably looking at a sixty-fourty split between the two districts, which could save us potentially somewhere around eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars and get three days of services, um, out of that position. The tuition numbers, which I know Jim is always, um, trying to figure out, you know, for you, where things are coming from. Again, I think, uh, numbers have not aligned. That's something that Mary Burks has been really good about in terms of clearly identifying which students are in which placements so that we get the funds in the right line, out of the gate. So that's what, um, you're seeing. So the tuition to mass public schoo- uh, public schools shows a shift in student placements. That probably was several years in the making, but just never made it into that way, so it is now accurate in terms of where we are. Tuition to non-public schools shows an increase in the number of students, again, that we're sending out. There are currently four students who are in placements because we don't have the compliant continuum of services to support social emotional needs in this building. So if we build our own program, so, you know, it's either you're in the general population or we're sending you out, there's no middle ground. And none of us believes that that's the correct course of action to take. If we were to do that, Mary is anticipating that you would save a hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars that you could put toward that program. Plus the special education, uh, transportation that's associated with those students, so you could in essence fund that program by bringing those four students back. And in terms of the size of that program, that's probably what we're talking about to start, is those four students and maybe a couple more that we pick up along the way. Year one, we wanna keep it small. As with any new program, there are bumps along the way. If you have a whole bucket load of kids, year one, and there are bumps, that's kind of more, particularly this kind of a program, that's more difficult. So we'd rather do it small, do it right, get the bumps worked out, and then figure out, you know, who else needs those kinds of supports. But for me, there's a real ethical dilemma in this, that you're either in the general population or you're out in an outside placement and there's nothing in the middle. And I think that's something that, uh, you as a committee really need to think strongly about, um, in terms of that. Go ahead.
Just to, just to better understand the, uh, tuition to public schools and then non-public schools. So is it fair to say that, uh, we basically shifted the incorrect amount that was showing tuition going to public schools to the non-public schools?
Correct.
That's a part of it. Also, we're seeing some increase, and that increase is strictly related to the four students that you were talking about, or?
Um, in the case of, two of them were already outplaced, two others have gone out this year. And if we were to continue, that would be that increase. And obviously, we would offset those things with, um, special education grant and circular. But still, we could decrease that line, or not, we would shift those monies, I should say, to an in-house program.
And what did you say that amount was, that we could...
One, uh, one ninety-seven, three fifty-four is what Mary is estimating at this point, plus the transportation associated with them.
So, so we're turning a thousand dollars if we can?
Right. And what the school-based services is proposing is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for their program, plus we would have to pay for, um, the teacher who would be, um, staffing it as, as the teacher of the program.
And what is the likelihood of that happening, that us being able to do that?
Um, very strong.
Okay.
Yeah. So it would be redeploying those funds, keeping those funds within our district to educate students in a program that could potentially expand once it gets its sea legs, uh, under...
Yeah. So just to make sure I, I understand, if we have those students, four students here, then we're gonna need to support them.
Absolutely.
So the net is not necessarily the two hundred thousand plus, what is the net approximately that we are gonna see then?
Net?
Well, we, we're gonna need additional support in-house to be able to support these four students who are gonna now be part of the district.
It would come from this tuition line plus a transportation. Those two things together would fund the program.
So if the students remain here in Granby, the s- the net savings for us would be what?
It'd pretty much be a wash.
Okay, so we, we don't have to, okay.
Right. Right. But again, it would, um, you know, as you heard tonight in the interviews, it would... it would allow students to be able to be when and how they can be available to learn within the regular education setting with their peers. So you have students whose math is a strength for them. That may be the first class that they're actually in the regular ed setting with the supports behind them so that if it doesn't go so well, you know, they can step back into, um, the, the, uh, learning sector.
Yeah. Of course, I, you know, obviously, I don't know the details of, of these situations, but the other thing that I heard was that at times we think of special education as holding hands twenty-four seven.
Mm-hmm.
And even the students may not want or need that at times, that's what I heard.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is there an opportunity to, not necessarily go into the extent of saying, we have so many, uh, capacity availability now on my board, but at least have some, uh, indication of us being able to save some of the time and not necessarily, you know, spend the twenty thousand dollars that might be saved for, uh, the services that we're gonna provide, because they may not need those services. Is there, is there any possibility of that happening? That maybe when we get them back, we realize that, hey, you know, we have all these services in-house, and we'll provide them and put our, uh, services together. Maybe we are spending a hundred and fifty of it, and then fifty, uh, fifty thousand is savings, isn't there?
We have, we have a hard proposal from school-based services for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, plus the teacher that we would hire.
Okay, so that's, that's already accounted for in a lot?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But then, but we, we're looking at, just so I get it quick, we're looking at four students for that amount of money.
You're spending that amount of money on them now by sending them out. You get, you, then, spend it and send them out into an outside placement that is a self-contained program with no ability.
Right. And none of those, and none of those, we, none of, again, I know, none of those can be brought back into a school building here and we can meet their needs with what we presently have?
Nope.
None of them.
Nope.
That's why they're out.
That's why they're out. We, this is where the continuum of services is truly lacking within this district, and in particularly in this arena. Um, is that, basically, the choice is, and John will tell you that the two of us have talked about a couple of students where if we brought them here, we would set them up for failure. So the only other choice is to send them out. And is that a correct thing when we know a child who can be supported, could be supported within?
As long as we know that we have the capability to support the students in the way that they need to be supported.
Mm-hmm. And that's. Right.
Because clearly, wherever they are right now, I suspect they're being supported. So the last thing I would wanna do is say, yes, come on back, and then we're only giving them seventy-five percent of what, what it is that they, they need.
No, that's the, that would be the goal of, of bringing in school-based services. And, um, you know, Ware has used the school-based services for several years now with a great deal of success. Had brought kids back into the district, and put them in this program, and they've been able to function.
I have no doubt that this, you know, this, this has the potential of being successful.
Hmm. Right. And that's why we would start small with bringing these four students back and letting it be all about them, and getting sea legs under us and all of that kinda business, and then worry about who and when other kids could be brought into the situation. But right now, when, um, both the candidates tonight talked about a, a sort of a tiered or continuum of services, and if you think of a big triangle, that tier one is sort of your general programming that all students get. And that should take care of eighty-five to ninety percent of your kids. For those who don't meet with success at that bottom tier. Then you're looking at a tier two, which is a little bit smaller intervention, and you're still gonna have one to two percent of your kids that aren't gonna make it at that tier two level, and you really need some intense interventions. And that's both academically and behaviorally.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the case. And so, right now, Grandview does not provide that continuum of services that can help meet kids within our own schools. And to me, that's a travesty. I think that we should be supporting kids here in our own schools. So you're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars to send them out? Or you're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars to keep them here, and potentially down the line, meet the needs of more students? To me, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Thank you.
Um, so that's, uh, pupil services. Um, the custodial or maintenance detail, there was nothing really significant in the health budget to talk about. Um, but in terms of the maintenance budget, um, you'll see that most of the s- uh, salaries are covered under school choice, but there is a little bit that would be, um, brought into, uh, the local, and that's for, um, restoring the maintenance position that we eliminated due to budget issues last year. Um, it would be a second shared position with the town. And we are now sha- sharing the services of Dave Turcot, but there's not enough of Dave Turcot to go around for the town and for the school side. So I do know that, uh, Mr. Martin is also, um, you know, in favor of, of having a second maintenance position that could be used within the Department of Public Facilities. Um, so that would be the equivalent of those two have, those two people's house that we went on. Um, and also within that was the, um, ask for another halftime custodian so that there could be a full-time night person at East Meadow School, as well as two full-time, uh, night custodians here at Grandview Junior Senior High. Uh, again, it's really hard when you're splitting somebody between two buildings. You only get them for half a night over there, and then, um, you know, they're stepping into half a night here, uh, and what they can get done. Um, drinking water, um, reflects the contract with Whitewater as, uh, our water operator. Um, and I know that we've had discussion about, um, John becoming a water operator for the district, but having gone through the recent experience that I have gone through with Mass DEP, I would strongly recommend against that. Um, to have it all on the shoulders of a single person and to have no redundancy, uh, is what got us into the place we were in a couple of months ago. Um, you know, we're, we're out of that place. Um, we're down to now one set of tests every week. Uh, DEP is satisfied enough, they wanna do a broader scale test, um, on twenty sites. And so we're working on what those sites will be, et cetera, and then moving from there. Um, but I think having Whitewater, who has a fleet of operators who can cover for each other or if somebody takes a vacation or whatever, um, is certainly well worth this. And I don't think that Cheryl wants to spend many of her waking moments thinking about water quality. So, um, I certainly would, um, you know, support continuing down, uh, that road. You're under contract with Whitewater for the remainder of, um, you know, for a whole of next year anyway, so.
Next school year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Was the, was the custodial supply really under budget last year? What happened there? I don't, I don't understand what happened there.
Um, again, um, John looked at, um, past spending histories, and it beats me how Nancy has figured out how to juggle all this stuff, but I think things came out of repairs, and that's why you've had to go back to the town for extra repair money. He actually sat down with her and did an analysis of two to three years' worth of bills that came in and said, this is based on the bills that I have seen, that this is how much we're gonna need for custodial supplies in that line planned purposefully. Um, so again, that's, that's something that, uh, you know, we certainly would, uh, take a look at. Heating well, of course, shows a decrease. Archie, um, did a great job of locking in at a dollar thirty-nine a gallon. Um, so that's for sixty, uh, thousand gallons. Um, so it's eighty-three four versus one twenty-six, so that's some significant savings there. Uh, one of the things we were talking, uh, Cheryl and I met with, uh, the architects, um, this afternoon to go over some things, and one of the things they were talking about was the possibility of going all propane over in that building, which, um, I think might be a wise decision. Propane is cheap. Um, it also increases the efficiency of the boilers from about eighty-five percent to ninety percent. It's only so far you can go with oil, but propane, you can go a lot farther.
Are they bringing that, bring, bringing that thought to the full building trade?
School building trade, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think, um, you know, I think that certainly, um, we'll take a look at that. Um, we also have a decrease in the telephone line, and, uh, God bless David. He, uh, went out to Comcast to see what they could do for us. Comcast came in with a quote.
I, I seen an increase there.
Hmm, you?
Telephone down.
Uh, telephone.
Telephone down.
Telephone from twenty thousand to fifty-five thousand, which telephone I will?
Fifty-five thousand, I don't know.
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand to eighty.
Seventeen thousand.
Where do you see that?
Looking at the one that was dated yesterday, I hope.
Telephone, two fifty.
Okay, what's the date on your file, Mike?
He needs a new computer.
Um, two twenty-two.
Okay, that's why. You're, I've got the wrong date, should have yesterday's date.
All right.
I always date stamp everything.
But it's, it says April fourth update, so I looked at the update.
Nope, it should be a draft that's dated two twenty sixteen dash oh four dash oh three, is the name of the file.
Okay.
All right.
Can find it.
Nope, we've gone from twenty thousand to seventeen thousand to eighty. Uh, and the reason for that is, again, David went out to Comcast, and then he went to OTT because he figured we might need to have one landline that was not, uh, voice over internet in case the internet went down.
Yeah, sure.
And he was very honest with OTT and told them why he was asking about this, that he was looking at Comcast, and they said, could you send us the quote? And they met it.
Hmm, funny how that works.
Hmm, and this quote is for the entire district and also adding a line. One of the things that is required under the bullying statute that you currently do not have, and that is a dedicated phone line for reporting, uh, bullying. That is supposed to be available and open for the public. You do not have that dedicated line right now, so that also includes adding a dedicated line for that purpose.
Okay.
So, um, okay. Um, building repairs have come down since the earlier iteration of the budget, and, um, while it's significantly higher than what has been budgeted in the past, there was a, uh, number in there for, um, a mold study that was done this past year that we don't plan on doing at West Street School another year, so I took that number out, so it decreased it to ninety-one five. Um, but again, to give you some comparison, last year you budgeted thirty-two nine, and then you went back to the town for seventy-five thousand. So yes, spent a hundred and seven thousand and change anyway, so ninety-one five, I think, is, uh, certainly, uh, a realistic number within that.
Was, was the seventy-five thousand that we went back for, what was, do you remember what it was?
It was for repairs to the boilers at West Street School.
So those are unexpected?
Right.
Thanks. So, uh, is this more of a contingency then?
No, this is based on John's analysis of the facilities and things that need to be attended to.
Or is it, is it? Or is it?
Um, he's gone through and looked at, you know, there are, there's a circulator on the boilers at West Street School that will probably need to be replaced, 'cause it's probably not gonna last two years. There are things that need to be done, you know, uh, in all three buildings, uh, from a preventative maintenance standpoint that just.
Like make sure the vents are running and working?
Yep.
And changing air like they're supposed to?
Yep.
Those kinda things.
Yep, yep. So, I mean, he's done a real thorough analysis. He did a great job. He, you know, hasn't been here all that long, and I threw this ginormous project at him, and he, he really has drilled down, uh, the details. Um.
My hope is, in some of these line items, that there is some contingency built in.
There is.
In areas that need contingencies.
Yes.
Like repairs.
Yep.
And maintenance.
Mm-hmm. Um, Grandview Junior Senior High School, uh, the principal salaries line shows an increase because of, um, the hiring of the new assistant principal. The former assistant principal, when I ever realized what she made, I almost fell over. She was woefully underpaid, um, and, um, you know. Uh, so that, that increase is not a big raise that John got, unfortunately, but, um, was to make sure that the assistant principal was being paid more in line with what an assistant principal should make. Um, teacher salaries, um, represent more clearly an offset by school choice. Again, as you, I told you earlier, that was sort of off on its own on the budget. We've actually plugged these numbers right into the budget master so you can see very clearly and transparently what's being offset by school choice and other numbers. Um, again, technology lines have, um, reflect, um, what we're trying to do, uh, within the plan. Again, here's David running the district on a shoestring. He tells me today that he's going back to one of his government folks to get a hundred more computers, um, which won't be a hundred workstations. Some will be harvested to help others run, because that's what happens when you get donated items. Uh, you know, our plan is to, um, bring in, uh, an advanced placement computer science course, which is gonna require some, uh, help, uh, you know, some other computer courses that are gonna require some devices in order to be able to run properly. These are the things that we need to do if we're gonna prepare kids for college and career. Um, the four thousand dollars in instructional software that you see, that's the VHS license in there, um, which we have spent this past year as well. Um, also, you know, we're doing things like, we still have forty computers that are running CRT monitors in this building, and mine the other two. Um, so again, swapping those out for LCD monitors, while it's some upfront costs, it certainly helps in energy savings in the long run, so, uh, some of those things. Uh, increasing accessibility to digital projectors and document cameras, again, both of which are key elements in, um, today's classrooms. Um, so that takes care of that.
Just a question on the, sorry, the, question on the subs.
Go ahead.
What are you doing differently with the subs? The subs, what's happening there?
The subs, I parsed out, within the budget system, it's paid by building, but within the budget master in the past, it has been budgeted solely at the high school. I just parsed it out in thirds, um, just so that this budget master more accurately reflects what's going on in practice, which is, if you sub at a certain school, you get paid at that certain school. So it's just to match what's happening within the accounting system. I don't have a precise number, I'm trying to get that.
Seventy-five thousand was budgeted for subs in the district, I guess?
Yes, mm-hmm. Um, and again, I'm, I'm just trying to get a little more analysis and see if I can shore up those numbers so they may shift a little bit, but, um, it would be within that seventy-five thousand dollar, um, limit. Anything else before I move on to East Meadow? All right, moving on to East Meadow then. Um, with regard to East Meadow and West Street School, um, Ms. Barthlett has approached me with, um, the desire to step back into the classroom. Um, there are some family issues that are going on from her, and, um, she's just feeling the stress of family and administration, and feeling like those two things are not gelling well. So Cheryl and I have been talking about that, and, um, we are working with the association with the goal of being able to enable her to step into a classroom position. And the, uh, request for a second grade teacher, a second, an extra second grade section, would allow for that to happen in some way, shape, or form. Um, so if we were to do that, um, then our proposal to you would be to, uh, begin now the process of having a principal and an assistant principal for both elementary schools, 'cause that's what you're gonna do in two years when the two schools come together. So there's no sense in hiring another principal for West Street School if in fact, two years from now, the model's gonna change, 'cause who's gonna take the job for two years and then be something else? So, um, the plan is to then, um, hi- um, you know, hire an, uh, an assistant principal at the elementary level, and the two would share, um, the responsibilities across the board, and that the savings that we would amass by moving to that model would take about ten thousand dollars and put it towards that extra section of second grade. We wouldn't fully fund it, but at least it would help to fund, um, that extra position. Uh, which we're finding that second grade tends to be the classroom, that mush- mushrooms, or the grade level mushrooms in the summer months, um, and that's what happened this year. So their classroom, their, uh, class sizes are a little on the high side right now, so, um, again, in an effort to keep class sizes small.
What are they right now?
They're twenty-four.
Hmm.
So.
Is that, is, uh, when we talked about class sizes a couple of meetings ago, whatever that was?
Mm-hmm.
Was that the intent? I mean, was twenty-four a number that we thought, or what, I don't remember that it was twenty-four, but.
Well, last year when we were making some difficult bu- budget decisions, and we decided to go down to two sections of second grade. Well, last year when we were making some difficult bu- budget decisions and we decided to go down to two sections of second grade, we were looking at, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere in there, and then six kids just kind of like showed up in summer months and all of a sudden, you're up to twenty-four. Um, and that makes a big difference when you're trying to teach children how to read. It makes a huge difference having that many extra kids in the classroom.
Does this change your projection as far as school choice uh numbers for second grade?
We, yeah, we added some school choice. Right now, there are three sections in first grade, our goal would be to preserve those three sections moving forward. Um, so that there was room enough for about six school choice seats to be asked for uh in that, in that regard, so that's what you approved at the last meeting.
Yeah.
There are currently only two sections of kindergarten, we would like to keep that in, three in first grade. Again, just trying to keep the numbers smaller. In kindergarten, there are two adults in the classroom, in first grade, there are not. So, again, being able to support um first graders as they are learning how to read, so it's really trying to keep the three sections of each grade level. Kindergarten did not have, um, the registration at this point does not have the numbers to support a third section of kindergarten, so that would probably stay at two, but it would be three firsts, three seconds, and three thirds. So.
Still on East Meadow, did, what, um, no lunch monitor? Some of the.
Oop.
And no salary there, not that's a lot of money, but it's not there.
Oops, that evidently did not get migrated over, so I will have to make sure that that happens. Thank you for catching that, Jim.
And what's with the, what's with team leaders? Is that a mistake also?
Um.
There's gotta be a mistake there.
What the team leader's um number has to do with is, let me just pull up that comment.
It can't go from, it can't go from three thirty-seven to nine thousand.
Well, again, this is where things may not have been accurately budgeted in the past.
Yeah, but there's only, how many, there's only three, three team leaders or so?
Well, you've got three team leaders, there's also been an ask for special education team leader for the elementary level, so it would be shared by both schools.
Is, so is that in that line?
Yes.
That still seems like too much, isn't it? They're not. Plus I'm, from, less like jumped a salary way up or something, that's not.
Let me uh go back and look at those numbers, but I'm pretty sure.
Twenty-something hundred? Is that too much? Is what you're saying?
Let me uh take a look, Jim, just to make sure I haven't gotten something.
I could be wrong, I could be wrong, I've been gone a long time.
Well, it, it, like I say, uh, there's a lot of numbers to look at and a lot of things to transpose.
I know, I'm, I'm sure.
So if you find something that I haven't seen, I'm fine, I'm absolutely fine with it. Let me look at the staff in the most here. Um, yep, you've got study club coordinator, you've got three team leaders, you've got a special education team leader and a stipend for music director for vocal at the elementary level.
So you put him in that line even if you call it team leaders?
Yeah, right.
And where, so it was somewhere else last year, obviously?
I can't answer that question.
You can't answer that.
Sorry, I wish I could answer these questions for you, but that's why we're at this whole notion of zero-based budgeting, so that we know where all of the things are.
And what, and what happened going down, what happened in the paraprofessional special needs? Why is that jumped up twenty thousand dollars by what you see, uh, looking at there, what?
Just one moment, let me get back to that spreadsheet. I'm playing jumping spreadsheets here. Okay, paraprofessionals, we're uh special needs students. Yes, we had a, um, we anticipate a student coming from West Street into East Meadow that will bring apparel with them.
So it's not a, it's just a, it's just a move of position, not an additional pair of them? Not that they're saying they're not needed, I'm not saying that.
For the subs, is it the same thing that we had not budgeted the way we should have and now we are showing it?
Again, within the accounts payable system, it is that way within our payroll system, but the Budget Master you were using last year, the Excel spreadsheet, had it just coming out of the high school. So again, we're just trying to put things in proper bucket, buckets so that they're in, in the way um that they should be.
And OT and speech language, that also is a, because there are people that trade, but see, why is that one? Seems like that one jumped up a bit, even though that they're not needed either, but.
Um, that's uh some increase in um, in time, we actually added some uh OT staff this year in order to meet IEPs.
For the, for the whole district, though, right?
Yep, but I mean, this is, you know, various shares.
Okay.
Um, it, when we get there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would you be able to show us where the decreases happened as well? Because for instance, the, I completely understand, the sub was somewhere else in a bucket, then we took it out there, we put it where it belongs, right?
Yep.
So I'm expecting a decline somewhere else of that, by the twenty-five thousand dollar amount.
Well, the amount was seventy-five thousand in the high school budget, so now the high school reads twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, so it was twenty-five.
Each of the schools for right now has a placeholder, placeholder of twenty-five each. All right, West Street School, um, again, the decrease here is um looking at the model for uh an assistant principal versus um a principal, and obviously, these two budgets are going to merge into one in a couple of years anyway, so um that will all be a part of what happens. Um, the other big thing again is looking at um instructional salaries and, and so on and so forth. And um, you know, again, the professional salaries, I'm not sure things were properly budgeted in the buckets that they needed to be, so that shows um, you know, some redeployment of, of some things as well. Um, the guidance salaries, that's really the licensed social worker, so I'm not sure why it shows as little amount as it does for FY sixteen, but that's a solid number um for uh this year's, uh, you know, as my last check. Um, I'll go through all of this, uh, again, with a fine tooth comb. Or Archie was out with the flu last week, so I didn't have my second set of eyes to help me with this process. So, um, he and I, hopefully he's feeling better and I'll see him tomorrow, well, uh, you know, again, spend some, some good time together, uh, having him check my numbers and I check his numbers, so.
Just a quick question, Judy, on, uh, um, something that I see on some of, some of the lines here in uh West Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, looks like there is no difference between all funds and LEA for some lines, but there, we are seeing that difference
Right.
for seventeen. Is it again because?
And if you look to the right, you'll see where the offsets are occurring. Okay, so for example, in the sal- teacher salaries, there's a Title I offset of twenty-three, three ninety-nine. There's a nine thousand dollar offset in the kindergarten grant and there's eighty-one thousand and change in school choice. So that's where the offsets are. So as you move through the right-hand side of that sheet, you'll see exactly where the balance comes from.
But for instance, if I look at, um, let me just, uh, paraprofessionals for special needs.
Mm-hmm.
In FY sixteen, it's a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred something for both LEA and all funds. Uh, next year, there's a difference between the two. Is it because we are starting supplementing part of it through grants or something, is that?
Well, we're showing it, let's put it that way, so that you can actually see, and that's seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars that's going to be paid for from the early education, child, early childhood education grant. Um.
And we currently have it too, but we're not showing it separately, is that what you're saying?
Right, you're not showing it within the Budget Master. Again, I'm trying to help people understand that there are the places where offsets occur so that it's clearer to you, um, you know, what other funds we're using to support the needs of the, of the students within the budget.
So are these numbers that we're seeing, for instance, just to, you know, pick one, twenty-three thirty dot zero zero zero? Are those the things that we're going to see in Softrite or what's going to be the, the uh way for us to align so that two years down the line, not that Cheryl's going to do that, but we don't again see LEA equals all funds situation because everything is in one?
This, this is the TMS way of doing a budget.
The, the one in FY sixteen?
Cheryl is, Cheryl's used to seeing this. This is a very familiar looking spreadsheet, this is what Ludlow uses.
Okay.
This is what Ludlow uses in terms of um a budgeting process.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, again, TMS works at the pleasure of the superintendent, so, you know, when I saw your old Budget Master, you know, I said to um Andy and Archie, you know, this is not what I'm used to seeing and, you know, this is what former superintendents have wanted to do. So part of our process is we begin to realign the budget so we can begin migrating towards a chart of accounts that we can use within Softrite, is to get all of this out so that everybody understands where the funding sources are occurring and what's offsetting the local budget, so that we make sure when we set up the accounts uh for Softrite that we're doing it in a way that matches the spending plan. So that's why you're seeing this happening within this Budget Master.
Of course, that's going to be interesting, not, not being uh facetious here, but in accounting, because some money moves from line item to line item.
Mm-hmm.
Regardless of what we do, it seems to me that there will be some cases where we're going to need uh the narrative for us to understand why now this line item is reduced by so much because we moved it somewhere else. So even then, even Softrite may not help us to understand the entire, entire uh situation.
The goal is to have this and Softrite mirror each other.
This being this that we're looking at?
Yes, this, this Excel spreadsheet that we use for budget planning purposes. The goal is to have this and the chart of accounts for Softrite mirror.
Oh, wait, so this doesn't go away? We're still like, uh, spreadsheet based?
This is, this is, no, this is just what we use for budget planning purposes, this is not what we use for expenditures and all that kind of stuff, so what comprises the budget plan and what the execution of the budget is should mirror each other in account structure and where all of the expendzi- expenditures happen. Um, right now, the Budget Master and our current system do not align well.
So who's?
So that's part of.
Who's going to do that? I mean, it's, there will be a Softrite version of what's, what's spent.
Right.
And it may align and it will, right? Because otherwise, we're going to see the gap immediately.
Mm-hmm.
But unless we take those and uh try to match them to the line items here, uh, we're not going to be able to see the difference between the budget and the accounts payable and receivable, that's.
What will happen in Softrite is once you have a voted budget, those numbers will be plugged into this spreadsheet and this spreadsheet will derive what goes into Softrite. This Excel workbook drives that.
Okay.
So. And again, with.
Yeah, my technical head is saying, you know, if we have a spreadsheet, there's, there's a lot of opportunities to actually make some changes too because I'm not huge on using spreadsheets on this type of large budgeting uh process, but, even though everybody does. I mean, I, I, I used it until recently as well, but the, the, the challenge is because we are really using this nice piece of software and trying to align it with whatever's in the spreadsheet, it's difficult to follow and then make some educated decision as to whether it's reasonable or we need additional funds or there are some savings. But we'll see, I mean, that's our experiment, right?
Well, and, and thing is, you have to remember, is a budget is a plan. So the town's going to vote something in June and that will be what it is, but by the time school opens in September, the bottom line can't change without a town vote, but where funds are being deployed may change within the budget because you're dealing with children and classrooms and.
Right.
A summer must eventually change.
And I have no problem with that. Here's where I have uh some problem. When, things will change, some expectations regarding certain lines will change, so we're going to, and some will be positive, some will be negative, and we're going to move things around. But when at the end of the year, things magically match that bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
The, 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 the total number that we have, that's where I'm having some problems because then I find no lessons learned. Whether, you know, it was something that we spent because of uh certain factors or we underspent or could have underspent uh if we had done things a certain way, those lessons get lost when things get moved around, but at the end of the year, we're still, if we uh budgeted four hundred dollars, we spent hundred dollars. Um, I, I would prefer to see hundred and five dollars and find out why we needed those five dollars, and I think that's the conversation we're having right now, but it, it doesn't always happen that way, you just uh, and this is not just peculiar, uh, a particular to us, it is basically uh something that happens everywhere, with magically numbers at the end of the year, boom, just, you know, match, we are within our budget, but we can't really learn our lessons because we don't know what moved where and why.
Well, here's, here's a couple of things that I have noticed in, in a year plus here, and that is that you don't have a clear system for budget transfers.
That's a good point, yeah.
One of the things that Softrite will do is it will cause us to move away from purchase, paper purchase orders to electronic purchase orders. Within a system that if somebody tries to execute a purchase order and there are not enough funds in the line, Softrite's going to stop them dead in their tracks until an actual transfer is made. And that's something down the road that you're going to need to think about as a policy when you get to that section of the policy manual around the business offices, well, how do you want to deal with transfers? And again, within the TMS client base, we have several policies that we can point you towards in terms of who makes the decision at what level, you know, how much gets done by the business office, how much gets done by the superintendent and what actually comes to the school committee, but in that process, all transfers are going to be tracked. So that eventually, at some point, you're not going to be doing zero-based budgets, but instead, you're going to have an analysis of a two to three-year spending plan because you've delineated what the spending plan is, and then TMS can sit with a building principal and say, gee, in this line, you seem to have categorically overspent and we've had to transfer, and in this line, you've categorically underspent. So doesn't it make sense to flip the lines around so that you're not bothering to do transfers anymore? Um, so that's, again, a little bit of what I've uncovered, uncovered here.
And um, I'm, I would imagine that the software or Softrite system will give us the ability to run different types of reports?
Mm-hmm.
Where you can track?
Yes.
Um, how you're doing on line items and if they're being overspent or underspent?
Right.
And then that answers more your question of why is this line item continually being overspent?
Right. And again, you know, I'm, having sat on the other side of the TMS desk, I have the districts where it is an electronic PO system and if somebody tries to execute a PO and there aren't sufficient funds, they can, they can only go so far. And then they have to request a transfer, um, the district that I'm thinking of, which is East Windsor, Connecticut, there's a, a process in place, business office does it up to a thousand dollars, superintendent does it beyond that uh and informs the Board of Ed, um, other districts, you know, the school committee will approve something if it's going from salaries to um, you know, discretionary expenditures or the other way, otherwise it gets handled within-house. So those are some things you'll need to consider and we can certainly bring some simple policies your way around this, but you do really want to have a better system of tracking um where the funds are going, when you're overspent, when you're not overspent, when you need to make up funds within lines because um there is sort of a behavior that I've watched that seems to think there is a magic money tree.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and when I send POs back to people and say, I need a line item, not a, um, I'm hoping I can, I can purchase this thing. A, what is a line item and B, do you as the budget manager, whether it's a principal or the tech instru- and tech director or director of uh facilities, you know, what line is this coming from and do you know you have the funds to expand this? And if you don't have the funds, where are you going to find them from?
Question on the, again, supplies, materials, things, we're not losing a lot of kids and things cost more.
Go ahead.
Why is that, is that a mistake that they're down six thousand dollars in supplies and materials? Things cost more every year and we're not having a lot less kids.
Well, again, here's one of those um things where I think that a number was carried forward from more populous days, I guess would be the way to say it, and nobody ever really thought about what really went into that number. So the number, yes, is less, but if you look at things like technology, um, you know, hardware, that's where some funds have been deployed. You know, technology, software was never purchased, people just did it out of their supply lines and that's not a correct code under um the coding system for the Commonwealth. Um, so the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that you report instructional software differently than you do your consumable supplies, but it was being taken from that line because people didn't realize that's where they needed to put it, so.
And those supplies cover things. And those supplies cover things like arts and music and this and that?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay.
So again, you're just seeing sort of the shifting of proper lines in which, um, budget items were were placed. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that, um, David was not a full member of the senior leadership team prior to, prior to my arrival. They called him in when they needed him to so that he's, this has been a huge learning curve for him too, to be able to unpack with the principals what really should be in a tech line versus in a supply line.
Are there pairs added on there? I was just, I thought we were loo- losing a pair of Westray moving up with a kid, but yet.
But we've had some.
This is receiving too.
Right, we've had some children come in, you know, at the preschool level that have required some intensive services. We have some.
So is that a new pair for next year or they're already there?
Um, it's actually a pair that we've had to add during the course of the year this year. I mean, what's being shown in F Y sixteen is what was budgeted, not necessarily what's gonna be expended, so. And then last but not least is athletics. And the big, uh, item here is athletic transportation. And that number is driven by the contract with first student. So in last year, you had budgeted, or this year, you had budgeted twenty-four thousand one fifty and the actual contract line is fifty-four thousand five.
How did that happen?
Um, it was probably way under budgeted, but when we went out to bid for student overall was the, the low bid. So we saved money on regular transportation, but, um.
Exactly, they lowered the regular transportation because we reduced the lines and all that. And then they made this one jump. And does this cover all the, um, is this just regular season or is this?
Postseason? No, this is, this would cover potential, and again, based on their knowledge of postseason transportation. So you may not all get used, but you still need to provision for it.
Okay. So, the price of our success, is that what you're saying?
Very much.
That's good.
Um, but again, like this year, we didn't have so, a couple of fall sports for middle schoolers 'cause it wasn't enough to fill the team, so that decreased, um, the actual expenditures in in transportation for athletics. But again, this was done based on an estimate of the numbers of games that were being played, the number of postseason contests, you know, in average. So that's what drove that number.
Is golf not a sport anymore?
Uh, right now, cold spring, um, country club is waiving the fees. And that seems to be a term that will continue, so.
Okay. You know, the one thing that, I completely agree, you know, just, uh, there will be some changes occasionally because we may have a projection of more trips and this and that, whatever it might be. But the interesting thing is that, especially when you go for bids,
Mm-hmm.
yesterday, I was getting the same service for twenty-four thousand dollars and I don't think that, you know, our success was that dramatically, uh, uh, less. Next day, it goes up by more than, uh, double. You know, it's like from twenty-four thousand, it goes to fifty-four thousand. And when the bids came back, I made the same point. I don't know how these are driven. Um, it it seemed at that point that they were actually making up for some of the lost revenue from the regular transportation side. But, you know, I may be, I may be speculating.
Your athletic transportation was overspent?
Say again?
Was under budgeted and overspent.
Under budgeted and overspent.
We're just trying to give you a real number.
Yeah, you know, and that, I think Jim was saying the same thing and I tried to make this and I know that we're trying to make sure that this is as transparent and as accurate as possible.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But the question that comes to mind is this, and I'm still, uh, struggling with it. I don't have an answer to it. If indeed, we were overspending or we were actually budgeting way under what we ended up using,
Mm-hmm.
where did the extra money come from? I mean, somebody had to spend that money from somewhere and obviously, we have limited funds.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And when I look at it that way, I can't find the answer. I mean, we we did, if we spent money that didn't exist and we said, well, in the coming years, we're gonna take care of it, then, you know, it would be somewhere in one of these line items.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see that either. So there is something that it still doesn't really, uh, make sense in my mind.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
All that amount, and this is a pretty sizable amount, that apparently was the gap in the past years because we were under budgeting.
Mm-hmm.
How we're making ends meet in the school district, that's, that's a big question in my head.
You were going back to the town?
Hmm?
You've been going back to the town?
Not for that, uh, that type of amount though. I mean, you're, you're absolutely correct that we went back,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
but not for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. We just, you know, went back for, I don't know, seventy-five was, for instance, the unexpected boiler issue that we went back, uh, with.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, I I mean, I know that we don't have the answer right now, but, uh, hopefully.
Well, that's why we went through this process
Yeah.
'cause we really needed to unpack the budget and know what we were talking about.
That last, what, what's meant by student activities? Forty thousand, what, what's that?
Why, that's like clubs and whatever. Why that has live, why that has come to live in the athletics budget, I'm not really sure. It really does not belong there. It really should be in the high school budget line. It's all of the advisor positions and club positions and whatever else. For some reason, it has landed in athletics. I'm not sure why that is.
Those are the ones that are in the contract?
Yep.
Those are the contracts that are listed here?
Yep, yep, contracted stipends, yes.
So you've taken those?
Mm-hmm.
You've taken every one of those that are listed there?
Yes.
Even though we don't have them, you've gotta put them in there.
Yes. Oh, no, I mean, I asked Mr. Cavallo to give me a list of all of those stipended positions, who, you know, what they were. Um, and then I went into the contract and looked at the contracted amounts and that's what it comes to.
And Jim, this was, first time was a great experience in, now with Judy and actually going through this because as you know, we, we gave a forward principle that all these positions, you know, lived in the contract and they didn't always get filled, you know? And it could be maybe thirty positions. So Judy actually sat down with me and said, you know, next year of these thirty, what would, what can you see being filled? And so we budgeted a number based on what the, you know, the allocation was for the particular position that we were looking to fill. And we basically budgeted it. Never before have we done that, which I thought was a great experience.
See, and I thought they would keep me up to this whole process.
I, I knew that was not gonna be the outcome. I mean, I knew that it was gonna be a terrible process, but I don't think anybody would regret having gone through it.
Well, and I, yeah, and I have to say, they have been very good natured about this 'cause it is a lot of grunt work going back to figure out, you know, just exactly what am I spending this money on? What is a realistic number for this line? Um, and I think you've had so many years of backing into a number that it, it's become so muddied that this was the only way to make it clear. So I have a question.
The athletic revolving, excuse me. So that, if I pay to play a sport, that money goes in athletic revolving?
Correct.
And then what, what do you use the athletic revolving for? Anything, everything, or is it specifically aligned to?
Right now, the spending, the, right now, the spending plan, and again, this was something I had to work with Kyle on, was we're gonna have a defined spending plan here. We're not gonna just take it from here this day and there that day. We're gonna have a defined spending plan. So technically, we're looking at fifty-five thousand five hundred, but I decided that maybe we should lowball it a little bit, just to have a little cushion in there. So fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars will be used to offset coach's salary. That's the plan. The rest of it will come from local budget.
I see it there. I took it, you see where you took it away there?
Yep. Mm-hmm, yeah. So that's, again, I'm trying to get through people that, let's get a spending plan. If the plan has to change, then let's be methodical.
So the athletes know that they're paying for my salary? Come on, Coach, you're gonna blame me.
You know, but again, I think it's a case of plans always change, but let's be methodical about it. And I think because, again, of the way things have been done in the past, the methodicalness of this has, has not come to fruition.
I think it makes sense.
So this is step one.
If someone ever asked, what's that rev- that athletic revolving? Well, it's being used to pay for the salaries of the coach.
Right, right.
It's clear cut, it's, there's no, it's transparent, like you always know.
Right.
It's not, oh, I don't know, you know, yet that's what it's being used for.
And, and in, and in Kyle's case, as a new athletic director, you know, he comes in to see me and where can I take this from and whatever else? Well, it's Kyle, what's your spending plan? And the first two ti- few times I asked him that, he was kinda like, I don't know what you're talking about. So when we sat down, Kyle and the number C and I together, I said, here's your plan. You've got, let's say, fifty-four five in athletic revolving. What are you going to use those funds more from, for? And you know that in your head so that you know which side of the, of the house you're on. Okay, well, let's use it for coach's salaries. Okay, fine and dandy, then we'll use it for coach's salaries to offset. It's not gonna fully offset.
The other question, well, not if I agree, disagree. So that, athletic director is being paid twenty-three thousand.
Mm-hmm.
He's also our elementary P E teacher.
Right.
But he, he only teaches P E two or three days a week?
Right, but there is incredible amount of work that has to be done over and above his.
And we can't get more P E for those kids out of that?
Well, I, I mean, he has some time during.
Cause that would mean P E, that would mean health, you know?
Mm-hmm. You'd probably look at having to pay a larger stipend or have somebody who's more available during the day. I mean, there's athletic director meetings that he has to go to, you know, the supervisory stuff that he has to do with going to games and this and that. And the next thing, that's all in, you know, that's part of the extra time, the, the extra money.
That's sort of a change from what we had done for years here now.
Mm-hmm, yep. Lots of changes.
All right, so the total school appropriation
Mm-hmm.
is eight million seven hundred eighteen thousand and change, correct?
Let me get to that tab, 'cause I can't hold all these numbers in my head, because they will fall out.
Come on, Judy, I would think you would know them all by heart by now.
What page do you want me to turn?
There are too many of them.
You're on the all, you're fit, you're on the whole budget, all funds?
I don't know what page it is.
If you're looking at, um, the, uh, all funds tab number and you go all the way down to the bottom, the grand total for all funds is eleven million two eighty-three, five seventy-nine and change.
Wait a minute, that's what I'm missing. That's what I wanna know.
Okay, so the all funds number is eleven million two eighty-three.
Two eighty-three, five seventy-nine, four.
Five seventy-nine and forty cents. The L E A number is nine million nine hundred seven thousand four oh four.
Nine million s.
Nine hundred seven thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Four hundred four and forty-eight cents. And so that accounts for, you know, one point five being, again, all those lines off to the right, um, the various sources, as you can see, that were pulled out.
And the numbers that you presented to us the very first time you presented numbers?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What were those numbers?
Uh, without going back to look, I couldn't tell you.
I don't have them on me.
Mm-hmm. I was a little lower than this because, again, we went through, we did a full, full-blown salary veri- verification,
That's what I wanna know.
including longevities and making sure that everything was budgeted for appropriately.
And what, what were the numbers last year?
Uh, the actual number that you voted, uh, last year, let me pull that spreadsheet up. Hold on just one moment. Hey guys, at this point, there are so many numbers in my head, I don't dare give you a number that isn't, that isn't correct. Wrong five, let's go over here. It was eight million and change.
The all funds?
Nope, the L E A.
Was eight million?
And change, yeah.
Well, is it closer to nine million or is it closer to eight million?
Hold on, just one more, I am really trying to find this for you. Just give me a second. It's in my head. Right. But I think it's not. So if you go tallying, there were one before. So if you look at the summary, what I see is total contribution by town is eight. Um, so it was eight million thirty-three dollars and five hundred, or eight million thirty-three thousand five hundred eighty dollars.
Thirty-three.
Yeah.
That's a little bit more, that's.
Thirty-three thousand and what?
Five eighty.
That's a cent.
Okay.
It can't be.
Judy, the Italian kind that we have here for F Y seventeen, is it our estimate or is it?
Those are numbers I just got the other day from Chris, so that needs to be factored into all of this. Um, I, we just got them late last week from Chris.
But it looks like it's not changing.
Um, it is a little bit. Um, there were some ups and some downs.
Three hundred dollars less.
Yeah.
Three hundred, yeah, about three hundred.
Mm-hmm. Um, where you find, um, increases is in, I believe, the administrative services, the operation and maintenance of plant allocation. Where you see decreases is in employee, um, retirement and workers comp, where the decreases were.
So we're looking at a difference between last year and this year through this whole process
Mm-hmm.
of roughly one point nine.
That's correct.
Million.
Now, you factor in what chapter seventy is, what the nets, minimum net school spending is plus the override that the town puts on top of that.
Mm, okay, are you saying eighteen or something?
And then we have, uh, a little over a fourth, a hundred thousand dollar gap with those numbers now between what has been categorically the finance committee stands on this.
Say that again?
Chapter seventy funds?
Yeah.
Plus what gets given to you by the town?
The three oh five.
So it is the minimum net school spending, which is the, the absolute minimum that they are required to spend.
Right. Yeah.
That plus the three oh five, that goes back how many ever years of an override?
Yeah.
Right.
The gap, when you put all those numbers together between what we're asking and those funding sources, is a little over four hundred thousand.
Oh, I thought you said a hundred thousand.
No.
I was like, that's why I say, can you say that again?
No.
I like that number better.
I do too, but, um, it is what it is right now.
So what are, what are our next steps? What are we doing?
Um, I'm gonna sit down with Archie and go through these numbers again with a fine-tooth comb just to make sure that, that we're as solid as we can possibly be, um, you know? Uh, 'cause like I say, I did this on my own without a second set of eyes. So I wanna verify everything with Archie and make sure that, uh, you know, we're in a, in a good place. I wanna take a look at the in-kind numbers that we got and see how that impacts this whole budget picture. I just plugged the numbers in, I haven't even played with them yet in terms of where that all sits. Um, so that, um, you are slated to meet again next Monday, um, for the purposes of talking about budget. So, um, I'll work with Archie this week, uh, on making sure that we've got everything buttoned up appropriately.
So I guess the nice thing about bottom-up budgeting, you know, the zero base, you know, or, or, or.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that now we have, um, a better framework
Mm-hmm.
to understand how we built the budget and how we came up with that total number. But also, it gives visibility into these different line items.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna have the opportunity to prioritize some of these things that are in, in, in our budget currently?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, I mean, typically, in my experience at least, any budget includes must haves and, you know, good to haves and all that, nice to haves.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna go through that exercise as well to see what we have?
I will sit down with the senior leadership team and we will have some of these discussions. I'm guessing we may need another meeting during the April break. I hate to ruin your.
I'm all right with that.
Mm-hmm.
parade, but I'm guessing we may need another meeting because I'm not sure I can sit down with the senior leadership team in time to get all of that done by next Monday. I can certainly work on, you know, getting these numbers tweaked and making sure that we are as absolutely accurate as possible between now and Monday. Um, but that other work may take us a little longer to do, so. Um, so there's one way we, there are a couple of ways we could do it. And one is to still continue to meet next week or not meet next week and wait until the vacation break and let me get it all done. So that's entirely up to you folks.
Well, this is the budget time and, you know, we do need to start thinking about the conversation we're gonna be having for this, um, joint meeting. we're going to be having for this, um, joint meeting. So it's not just about the numbers. And I think it's going to require more than one meeting.
Well, if you cancel your Hawaiian vacation, we can all...
Cancelled, done.
Wow, you're cancelling your Hawaiian vacation for us?
And it was very easy, just like that.
Yeah. My imaginary Hawaiian vacation.
Not definitely the case.
Um, okay. And the reason why I'm asking it the way I ask is because earlier, you know, a meeting or two ago, we had this conversation that we always tend to look at this number and then say, hey, you know, where are we cutting?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from a perspective of the needs that we have to be able to run this school district the way it should be, it doesn't make any sense. But also, again, you know, from a budgeting perspective, if we can identify whether there's anything that is nice to have that we may be able to postpone or do something else with and all that, those are things that we should have available to us to be able to make the decisions that we need to make.
Or are there things, particularly in the technology and maintenance worlds, that could be phased in over time? Instead of a one-year drop, maybe it's a three-year plan.
Right.
You know? Uh, those kinds of things certainly we can take a look at.
Yep.
Ready to keep going?
Yes.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we only have a couple of hours left to midnight, so I hope...
Absolutely, before midnight and before Cinderella turns into a pumpkin. The other thing is the capital plan. Um, and I did send you some revisions to that based on what we now know with having had a successful vote on the elementary school. So because we got sort of hung up in this holding pattern with the capital planning committee, and understandably so, don't mishear me, um, we missed a window of opportunity to apply for an accelerator roof repair program to the MSBA. So, and it is what it is. So to be fiscally prudent, I flipped the replacement of the roof to year two and put the boilers up in year one, along with replacing exterior doors. Now, this capital plan is less than the original capital plan because I pulled off projects that had to deal with West Street and East Meadow that are going to happen as a result of the build anyway. So, um, the exterior door replacement is down from the original estimate, um, and the boilers are, um, put towards year one. Now, one of the things we're going to do in cooperation with the energy committee, and we all know and love the chair of the energy committee quite well, uh, is that we are going to have an audit done of this building so that there could potentially be some D O E R, which is the Department of Energy Resources reimbursement, because you are a green community, on the boilers. So it may not even cost the full five hundred thousand. Um, John and I took a little field trip to a neighboring school district that has done similar kinds of projects and took a look at, um, boiler replacements that have been done, um, going from giant boilers that are, like ours, about sixty-five percent efficient, which is not very good, to, um, Viesman boilers that are eighty-five, close to ninety percent efficient, even with oil. And...
There was an article in the Washington Post that my wife forwarded to me. It's talking about these things. This is actually one of those funny things that the state is doing nothing about.
Mm-hmm.
And then they want us to do a lot of things about, you know, become more energy efficient and this and that. Instead of providing grants, providing the money for us to really get into this renewable energy phase and, uh, make sure that we are self-sufficient eventually, now we are looking at, what, hundred and, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars? I mean, you're saying that money, that amount may go down a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot of, a lot of money that we need to...
But the state actually does provide money. If you're a green community, it actually does provide money.
Five hundred and thirty thousand dollars on it?
Um, I don't know exactly how much of it, but the money is actually pretty unlimited. It's just the more money you ask for, the more you have to do for it. So we're in the process now of...
It's like Big Y.
Yeah, whatever, you know.
You buy more, you say more.
Exactly.
All right.
So we're in the process now, the energy committee is in the process with the school and with Guardian, who's coming in to do the audit. Once they do that audit and we find out, which we already know, that the boilers are the most cost inefficient thing right now, we'll be able to get money to actually replace them, so...
Because the return on investment on your boilers will be huge.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, I'd be curious to find out what the amount is that we are getting. It would be good.
As soon as we know, as soon as we...
Are we meeting with the capital committee soon?
I, as you saw from my email, emailed you and Mr. Martin, I'm requesting to know when that might happen. I have not heard that.
Because I usually hear this, but take this boiler, five hundred and thirty thousand. Is that, is that a estimate that someone came in and looked and said, this is what it's going to cost you?
The TMS facility...
They're going to nail us for that, you know, I hope it's pretty accurate because they're going to give us...
The TMS facilities consultant came in. And based on, and based on the conversation that I have with the director of Buildings and Grounds in Belcher Town, that's a pretty accurate estimate.
Okay.
So, um, so that was done. Um, and then we moved, I moved some other things around with the plan just to try and keep as much as I could, you know, some somewhat equitable. So, um, so that's where we're at right at the moment. So this is a revision to the plan. Like I say, I did email out all of the parties that be, and that's where we're at.
That's a lot of work, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's... Long overdue.
You must like numbers.
Oh, that's why, uh, TMS is my friends.
So what do you recommend? Do you recommend that we follow up with the capital plan or Mr. Martin?
Um, you know, I can certainly...
I don't want to get behind on this. And by me, I don't necessarily mean you. I'm wondering if maybe the school committee needs to send a friendly email or letter or...
How bad is this? I don't even know who's on the capital planning committee because that all happened before I came last year, so I don't even know who I'd reach out to.
So you only sent it to Chris Martin?
That's correct.
So then we're assuming he will forward this to the members of the capital plan.
That would be my assumption, he did on the first iteration.
Yeah, I'm following up on a couple of things, including this one. But that's a good point.
Well, I will...
Have we asked to go...
I will call, I will call one of the members of it.
Okay.
I know's on the committee, I've talked with him before, just to say, hey, you gotten it? What are the next steps?
My understanding is that last year, whenever the night was that they met, Izabella could not go, so John had the pleasure of going to that meeting and doing that, doing that piece. But, you know, again, I've just emailed and just said, let me know, because my dance card does tend to fill rather quickly, so, you know, the sooner I can know a night, the better off I can be. I can change calendar or whatever I need to do.
Well, I guess my question is, does it make sense to formalize some of this stuff? Because as much as I appreciate conversations and phone calls, you know, this is not a big deal.
Yeah, like I say, I'm just waiting for my...
Do we need to formalize some of these? You know, we spend a lot of time talking about this stuff and...
By which you mean you're going to write a grant letter and we're going to send it, is that...
Well, yes, by what I mean is, you know, maybe even coming from the chair of the school committee with all of our signatures.
Well, let me just call the member tomorrow and ask them, when can we sit down and go over this with you? And I'll just, you know, if I don't...
And then if there's something I need to forward to them or some way I need to reach out to them, just let me know, Jim. I'd be happy to do that, that's my problem. So if you are going to meet during the April vacation week, Monday is not an option because it is a municipal holiday.
Yes.
Um, so...
And I'll be running the marathon, so...
Wow, I'm impressed.
I just wanted to see if everybody's still awake.
We're working on it. Okay, we're going to run through the rest of this agenda, no, I'm not.
I know, my biggest priority is...
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday worked better for me.
Wednesday the twentieth?
Wednesday doesn't work for me.
Yeah, I can't do Tuesday. Meeting number, going once.
My, uh, I, you know...
What day worked better for you?
I could do the Tuesday or the Thursday.
I'm pretty sure both.
And either of those. Thursday is a school building committee meeting.
And Monday we can't do it because what?
Holiday.
It's Patriots Day, so you can't do municipal, or you can't conduct business.
I'm good either day.
Which day?
Eighteenth or nineteenth.
No, eighteen.
Eighteenth we can't do.
So people...
Or nineteenth or twenty.
Yeah.
Quick adjustment there.
I can do the nineteenth, but not the twentieth.
Same thing.
Can you do Tuesday?
I hit the person on the meeting, I think.
Tuesday's unmarked for you, is that correct?
Well, I can do Tuesday, I'm lucky and I can.
Calendar bingo.
I know.
I know.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, twenty-second, I have it. So what are we doing?
We can just meet next Monday, just go from there.
See how much you get to.
We're going to meet next Monday, right, anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah. How far we get?
How far we get.
Okay.
We're starting at six.
Well, the other option, who can't do Tuesday besides me? There's somebody else.
Jim.
Oh, Jim can't do it either. And Thursday?
Thursday we have school building committee.
Right, okay, well, what was that? Yeah, well, I suppose let's meet Monday, then...
See where we're at.
Yeah, see where we're at.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
All right. Moving right along. Here's what I would like to suggest, because it is now ten oh nine. Um, that Mr. Chairman would like to suggest that maybe we table the social emotional learning proposal till next Monday.
I'll second.
Oh, third.
I don't need that, I don't think we need emotional...
So you need to call for a vote, Mr. Chairman, to table it?
Uh, all in favor?
Yay!
That was the easiest vote ever.
Can we do a school calendar, do you think?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right. That'd be awesome. Okay, so two options were presented to you. They were also presented to the association. The association did a survey. And here are the results. Drum roll, no big surprise.
I think I have one already.
Keep it as option one as well.
Hmm?
Keep it as option one as well.
I agree.
Your incoming superintendent wanted to float option two, so we floated.
Whoa, 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 that was a senior leadership decision.
Yeah.
So senior, are you saying senior leadership is not agreeing with option one?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was just another option to throw out there.
Oh, all right.
What I would say is that the association's not real excited about option two. In case you hadn't noticed.
Yeah, I think we could pretty much... But thanks for clarifying.
So, some of the other changes, um, or some of the things that are common to both options that are changes from this year is, number one, the day before the December vacation is a full day versus a half day. As we have discovered, that there's not a whole lot of people that show up that day anyway. Um, the other change that is common to both but different than this year's calendar is Good Friday. Um, and that's, again, I actually got hard data on that one that you can see in the memo. And again, it was not a banner day for attendance on the part of staff or students. Um, it was a great day for chemistry, but, um...
I actually totally forgot we didn't have school that day at like seven forty, because I don't work on that day. And so the seven forty-five, my phone rang and it was the van pool. I drive, I'm waiting to pick my son up and everyone was in bed. I was like, get everybody up! So I like having Good Friday off.
Well, and it is the Friday before the April break, so you've got to know that it's not even, it's not even as good as it was this year, so...
Can I make motion to approve option one? Second, so... Let's do it, thank you, Jim.
So, question. We normally approve the calendar altogether, so we have to approve this separately because we have a calendar, the full year calendar, right, just we vote on that, so...
Right, so you've been given two options to vote on.
Option one, calendar.
So option one is with a...
Okay, the rest stays the way it was in the way. Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
That's easy, moving right on. Love it, love it, love it. Let me compare to where it was. Okay. And so that is the end of reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
That is the end of my energy level.
Me too.
Just a quick executive session, and we can...
We'll shoot a thousandth of a second.
Forty-five seconds.
Um, you had conversations that went well?
Yes.
So we're all set, we have a new...
Uh, well, we will enter into negotiation.
Right, pending that, we...
Yes.
Good, thank you very much for doing that. Congratulations, everybody.
All right.
So we have an executive session?
We do.
Okay, we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Part Eight Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bianca McCoskey, aye. Jennifer Kern, aye. Corinne McCourt, aye.
And Pedro, aye.
And Mary Lamb, aye. Thank you.